All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 15th, 2014. Let's take a roll call.
Here.
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 Commissioner Gonzalez, Trava, and Commissioner Vice-Chef Kialin are absent. We're expecting Commissioner Hamilton.
Yeah, we expect Commissioner Hamilton around 8:30, as we understand. All right, next item is approval of the agenda. Are there questions, or can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Next item is, I do ask anybody in the audience, meeting protocol. I'll be maintaining order. We're going to follow order, and I actually, can I get a little clarification on the timer? How that works? Do you guys run it, or do we run it? Now that we have a timer.
The staffs never have to.
All right, well, we're going to be experimenting with a timer tonight. Three minutes, and there'll even be some visual that we can't see, so we'll be working with that. So the next item on the agenda is public comments on items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody from the public has a comment on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, this is the time to say it. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to the consent calendar. There are three items on the consent calendar. One of them's recommended for continuation. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
Or comments?
I have one comment, perhaps it's the form of a motion, on the item number two, the library monument sign. I think the sign is beautiful, and it's wonderful. What I would like to suggest is that the library be allowed to have a second sign. My concern is the way it's facing. It might not be seen at all angles. So my motion would be to allow a second sign facing what would sort of be southwest, if the library deems it necessary or practical in the future.
So I'm just going to ask Mr. Moore a question on protocol, and do we need to pull it off to do that, or is that an acceptable friendly amendment to the...
I think you could make the motion to approve...
Motion to approve consent with...
With a motion to approve it, subject to them being allowed a second location...
Based upon staff review?
If they find that it's subject, that's okay with the fire department.
Okay.
Can I, just a question for staff on that consent item? Is that just replacing the existing sign that's there right now?
And perhaps allow staff to review the location as well.
Right, absolutely, we should put that in.
So I think, yeah, let's just go ahead and pull this item if we're going to mess with it too much. So I think we need to make a motion now to pull it. Okay, so can I have a motion to pull this item? We'll make it the first item on action.
Since I'm doing this, I'll make a motion to remove this item from the consent calendar for May 15th, 2014, pending this motion to allow a second sign, and hopefully get it back on the calendar in the next session.
It'll be on this, we're just moving it to the public hearing items.
Okay, fine.
So we're just moving it down.
Great, move it to the public hearing then.
So the motion's to move it to the public hearing item. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So, item two, 2097 Sir Francis Drake, application 1417, will be the first thing we talk about on public hearing items. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent items, which is continuance of Six Bridge Court and 101 Cascade Drive?
I make a motion to approve the remaining two consent items.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So if you're here for Six Bridge Court or 101 Cascade Drive, those items, Six Bridge Court's continued, 101 Cascade is approved pending, there's a 10-day appeal period, $500 fee at the town hall, check with staff before proceeding. So if you're here for that, you're done. Thank you. So we're, as we've amended, the first public hearing item now will be 2097 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, the sign, you can keep it quick.
Okay. I'll try. Yeah, the library's proposing to erect a 20-square-foot sandblasted cedar monument sign with the signed copy Fairfax Branch Marin County Library, with the library logo on the north side of the main library entrance, east of the bike path. And staff was recommending approval, subject to the final location being approved by the building official, the fire department, and the police department. And we have no problem with you amending that motion to include the possibility of a second location, same sign, as long as the location is approved by those three departments as well. Was the existing sign going to go in in the same location, or the new sign at the same location as the existing sign? I'm not sure it's exactly the same location. Do you know if it's going exactly where the old sign is?
I don't know if it's exactly...
This is the sign.
Do you know my...
Yeah, we're not sure if it's going exactly the same place. It's on, you know, they marked it on the aerial photo that they gave you where they're going to locate it.
Okay, so, but based on the understanding, the recommendation we were interested in making is basically allowing staff to approve a second sign of the same design...
Right.
As necessary, if necessary.
Right.
Pending the same conditions.
With the subject to the same condition.
So it sounds like we could, I'm just looking at the recommendation, so based on the finding, the proposed monument sign, wait.
Yeah, you could just say that two...
Something I lost the...
Because it's only one little sheet.
It's only one page. I'm just looking for the recommendation. So we'll approve two, up to two signs. Would that be the amendment, is to approve up to two signs?
Yes.
And they still have to meet the same condition.
With the location, subject to approval by staff.
Right, I mean, the idea, the idea basically here is to have it facing another direction so more traffic can see it.
Okay, is there a, I don't know if we can, I think the sentiment is understood. I don't know that we'll be able to modify the recommendation perfectly, but if we can get a motion that's with slight amendment, go ahead.
Since we've brought it up, I just wanted to call out on the, on the first page of the application, in the, in the text, it says lettering is raised and painted black, but on the sign it's shown white. So I just want to make sure it's white. I mean, I'm assuming it is, because all of the picture...
Sure, if you want it not white, then absolutely do it white.
But that's the design, right? The white letters.
Have them push the button.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, we'll make it white.
Okay.
Because I think the other library signs are white lettering.
I think so too, but in text, it's describing it as black, and I just want to be consistent.
We'll make sure we clear that, put that clearly in the letter of action.
So is there anyone that wants to make the motion?
So the motion would be to allow a second sign facing approximately southwest in the future, subject to approval of staff, and the lettering shall be in white.
A motion to approve the application, including a second sign, as reviewed and approved by staff, and police department and fire department? Is that the motion?
Yes, that's the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. So we'll, there is a 10-day appeal period, definitely communicate with staff, and if there is an interest in a second sign, do work with Linda and Jim on that. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the first, item four, 3 Arrowood Lane, application 1414.
This item was continued from the April 24th, 2014 meeting, where the commission directed the applicant to provide them with some additional information, which included some revisions to some of the plan pages, to show the materials and colors that are proposed for each exterior portion of the house, and to provide details of how the exterior will be finished. They also asked that they, that the applicant verify and/or correct the scale on the lighting plan, so that the commission can verify the location of the recessed LED lighting proposed for underneath the eaves. And you asked that he provide an alternative color palette for the house that will complement the dark green of the forest located on the hill at the rear of the house, and that you provide scaled, that he provide scaled color elevations of the proposed fences, including materials, and a site plan that shows the location of the fences. And our original recommendation was for approval of this project, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
And just to note, we have the two, the palette from the last meeting in April, and the revised palette up here, and the commissioners have been able to look at them a little bit before the meeting, and we may have questions, so. So are there questions for staff at this point? No? Okay. So applicant, where are you? Oh.
And just one point, Mr. Chair, just one point in your resolution, the changes you asked for the resolution are track changed.
Yeah, I saw those, thank you. So do we have questions for the applicant? Have them come up?
I have one question.
For staff or applicant? For the applicant, come on up.
For the applicant.
Yep. Yes, please, come on up, give your name, address, and make sure that the microphone is on, the red light's on.
Yes, this is Wayne Ferrari, and my wife Cynthia Post, at the residence of 3 Arrowood, were anxious to become community members. I have responded to the items, the new color palette, one item is, I went to Benjamin Moore, and I had asked him about it, and they added 50% coloring to the tan, got it more of an adobe-type-of-thing color. I originally took in the samples of the dirt and the dead grass, that's always up there when it dies, which is probably tomorrow, and pretty much matched that. But the more I left it on the property, the brighter it did get reflectivity, and so darkened it 50%, which is what Benjamin Moore suggested, it softens it more, kind of an adobe kind of deal, but not that really clay color, because that starts to bring out reds, and I'd like to stay away from that, even though we have those beautiful madrones. We do have the 400 trees on the property, and poison ivy. So the coloring's on here, and then I took the lighter green that you have on both boards. Both of those, I needed to remain the same, because I had them do 50% on the lower one, and it turned into the upper one entirely. They increased it 50% on the upper one, and it was not distinguishable. At that point, it starts to approach the blacks, and we don't need that. All of the trees up there right now are lighter than the darkest green, and they're dancing around the lower one. But the brown improved it a lot, and so that's how I approached it. The redwood that you see there is the fence itself, which has a, which was a second item was requested to clarify. So the redwoods fence on the left side is the fence, not the house siding. It's redwood, and it's staggered, which I have on the detail amended here. If you get an opportunity, don't open up that page, we could discuss it, or just hear my presentation. That has a clear coat on it. The color sample on my, slippery little sucker, on my plan sheet, shows it with the residence that I'm currently at, and it's two years old, and because of the clear coat, it doesn't go into that gray-black discoloration, and it holds a wonderful, wonderful quality, and I certainly love redwood myself. With respect to the fence and what could be seen, I made a drawing here to help illustrate from Sir Francis Drake, looking up on the property. I'm going to bring a couple of sheets up to you, because it's, a picture's worth a thousand words. This is a subject matter that I really didn't know, and so last meeting was very helpful in helping me take another look at it. The first page, I don't have them numbered, so the first page shows the Sir Francis Drake, which is, I'm showing it to the audience, is that okay? Is Sir Francis Drake at elevation 160. This is taken from the Engineers Survey Monument of a Fire Hydrant on Sir Francis Drake at elevation 164. So it's a fair representation of Sir Francis Drake at that location, close to Oak Manor. It is, because I have the engineered drawings, 400 feet away to the fence line of the property. So that's the big picture, and you can't see much. So you flip the next page, please. The next place shows a little bit more of the angle of, without Sir Francis Drake, and it shows two lines on the upper portion. The upper one comes up to the eve, and the lower one, whoa, clips the top of the fence. Now, this is a key, important part right here. The fence is nine foot nine away from the back bedroom. The rest of the house becomes 20 feet away. So you see there's a little bit of an area to where you can see the triangle right at the elevation 24950, right up above it, at the nine-foot-nine fence, and it does, it does see the house siding. So please flip the page one more time, and I don't need my reading glasses then. So now it's illustrating two items. It's showing on the bottom right corner, nine foot nine, which is from the back bedroom, and the rest of the house is another 10 feet recessed in. So when I take those two identical lines from the page before, this is the same drawing, just blown up each time, not redrawn. So the entire patio area, then the fence blocks it, and this is a six-foot-high fence, which is required for around the pool, clips around it, and you don't see it all. At the nine foot nine, there's 10 inches of wall siding. Everything else is fascia and roof. So to help illustrate that, when you flip the next page, I think it's the last page, I own the Revit AutoCAD program, so it was very easy to take the house and put it up at that 13 degrees, which was on the other pages, looking up from Sir Francis Drake. If you look on the left side of the picture, you see, you see the tan. Now, please remember, the computer can't match colors very well, but you see the tan, and then the trim of the window on the bedroom. Now, I left the fence cut off there to show that if you extend the top of that fence to the right on the plan, that you will see, even at nine foot nine, you will see nothing but the roof line, and barely the fascia. As soon as it pops out to 20 feet, it's not a rectangular property, it has a little angle to it, as you saw on the landscaping from last time, that you don't see the house at all. You just don't see it. So there's no big, and there's not much surface area on this portion of the house, since there's so many windows and the trim, but going darker, actually, I actually like it a lot better myself, so, which isn't this color on the plan, it's this one up here. So by Kelly Moore's suggestion on there, I like it quite a bit. It's not as reflective, and on the front of the house, we have a lot of windows too. And you don't see the front of the house unless you drive up the street, and there's absolutely no other angle. There's a little bit of an angle below the 711, you know, you look up at a corner like this, the mountain goes on the one, on the left side, which is part of our property, goes 400 feet back, and then the other three houses, 2, 4, and 6, are on the right, but we're recessed, and so I hope this angle helps illustrate what people will be seeing driving by, supposed to be watching the traffic anyhow, for that. So I consider it a little bit tucked away and hidden into the property, so is that enough explanation to help illustrate to what we're...
Yeah, no, I think that's...
It was brought up, so I wanted to make sure that I addressed it with respect.
That's good, and I'm going through, I think, the new pack, and I just want to make sure that, because the other question was about the lighting and...
Lighting, yes.
And the lighting plan, so I want to make sure I'm looking at the right lighting plan.
Yeah, the lighting plan.
It's A, it says it's A1041.
Yes, I have the actual dimensions. They're eight foot six to 10 foot apart, and when I did a sample at my house, I did eight foot, nine feet high, not 10 feet, and then I went every other at 16 feet, and there was a total dangerous dead spot. And this is for security now. Keep in mind that the light itself, or to be able to walk around, is directing straight down. This light projects more. The LED lights are 120-degree angle, and so take the darkness of taking a flashlight and shining it on a white wall, you're going to get a glare. Shine it into the dark forest, and it doesn't have much reflectivity, because it has, it can't, it absorbs the light. On the manufacturer's brochure, there, it illustrates the 4-inch and the 6-inch LED. They must be the waterproof ones, because it's outside application. So they are 15 watts, not 12 watts, as compared to the 15-watt, 75-watt halogen. Now, the catalog data shows the term lumens was brought up last time, to see how brilliant the light is. There's two conditions here. One's a lumen, and one's a kelvin. A kelvin is an LED number that has to do with a candlelight versus the sky, and how white, blue, or yellow it is. I purchased both of them, and the one that approaches the blue is just plain, by my own visual sight, objectionable. It didn't give a clear enough light. Now, the light pattern, so taking this light versus a spotlight on a house, a spotlight shoots out and shines in the neighbor's house, is always that. These ones are directed straight down, so by the time they hit the pattern in 10 feet down, they're, they're losing their emitence, their glare in here. I have a sample of both of these lights right here, if it would help show them. So they're tucked under, unless you're standing directly underneath the light, like this one, and this one's a heck of a lot brighter, but helpful down there. It can never glare like a spotlight into anybody's eyes or residents here. I do have the physical samples here that I purchased, if you would like to see them.
So I just wanted to ask one quick question.
Yes.
So the description you were giving before, which was how you would see the house, and how the fence blocks it, which I understand.
Mm-hmm.
When I'm looking at your plans, the bedroom you're talking about, that's essentially bedroom BD1 in your site plan?
Yes.
A140?
Yes.
Because I guess that's the question with this light. You're talking about light hitting the ground, but if you're down on the road and you're looking up, the only thing you might see is under the eaves.
You'll never see under the eaves, because that fence line that we illustrated here, that, just the bedroom section, and there's three of them, that are pointing straight down, and the angle of light is 120 degrees, so if you plumb down and go 60 degrees, you're not going the complement of 15 degrees, 70, 65 degrees out to the street, so...
So you're not going to be looking from, from the street view that we were talking about, you're not going to see lights. You're going to see light, but you're not going to see the lights themselves, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I have the lights.
Okay. That's, that's what my question, I know they're inset, I understand that, but when we're looking up at the, at the eve, are we going to be seeing lights?
The fascia's down, another three inches.
Okay, so the fascia drops below, below the soffit, essentially, right?
Yeah, just the, the fascia's another three inches down, and 60 degrees coming down like this.
Right.
These are not the physical lights, they're waterproof.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I, I raised part of the objection, these are beautiful units. I raised part of the objection the other week, because what I don't want to end up with, I mean, I don't think we want to end up with...
Go back, thank you.
Is something like this. If you could just take a look for a moment, is like, this is a picture of an alien landing craft from a movie, and we don't want this effect from, from driving by at night on Sir Francis Drake. So you're, you're clarifying now, saying that the fence would hide the eve lights on the Sir Francis Drake side of the house?
You'll never see, you'll never see the place.
Because these are extremely bright. I had a little bit of education in this, and I know that, I know that headlight, car headlights, LED car headlights range in lumens from, which is the light intensity, you know, as you know, from approximately 1,000 to approximately 1,400 lumens. And here you have lights that are approximately 800 lumens, so that approaches a very bright light, and so if, if, if the lights themselves can't be seen at night from drivers going by Sir Francis Drake, I'm okay with that.
The fence blocks it entirely, the angles support that. Keep in mind that the headlights with 1,000 lumens are spotlights, and they're, they're not uniformly 120-degree angle. A headlight doesn't shoot 120 degrees out, it's more beamed straightforward. So the alien light is more to, like a spotlight, to see straight on the ground, and, and I understood your, your comment there, so I actually did not have the answer on the lumen strength. It was on, it is on the cat in the manufacturer's catalog there, but it's a spotlight versus a uniform cone, and because of these, at 10 feet high, and shining into the dark ground, they lose themselves, but they do not have, and nobody's eyeball can see them on my, on my illustration there, for my elevations are accurate, because those are elevations, numbers don't lie, so...
So, and I think we were, we haven't seen proposals like this, so it was, that's one of the reasons you're getting a lot of questions, we haven't had other houses where there's proposed for light. So I think I do appreciate the effort you've given and the information on this.
I've spoken to, thank you, because I've spoken to five electricians, and they were a little unfamiliar themselves. It's everything that you buy at those other places, cans, cans, cans. These are engineered in Canada, of course, they're made somewhere else, but I've thrown it in the bathtub lit up, they're waterproof, they're safe, and they're cool, and the wattage is down, but they do not have the spotlight scenario like a headlights are.
Okay, so do we have any other questions for Mr. Ferrari?
Just the last one on the materials and the colors that are being used. The masonry panel that was originally submitted last month, that remains the same?
Yes, it does. And then there was one other item that was requested as well.
Was there, there were concerns on the landscape?
The landscaping, after the meeting, the question came up, put a fence around the garden, and when we went out and spoke with our neighbors, 5 Arrowood had indicated that he's still in the architectural design, and he showed me some pictures of what they're looking at for the front yard, you know, with their new two-year-old baby, and a garden isn't a smart idea, because putting a fence around it kind of puts a door on their yard. Now, the area that I identified on L102 shows planting area eight. That was the area I originally identified as vegetation. If you go to the second page of the document, I amended sheet T100.1, which illustrates that I have changed planting area to the no-mow grass, to keep it green and have a root system for erosion. I would also like to offer the information that this is not the building envelope... I would also like to offer the information that this is not the building envelope. It's the open space area that's supposed to just be private open space and not landscaped. But because it does link five and three together, and it's a 45-degree angle, so that turns out to be too steep to grow a garden, too. So whole folds, whole folds wins, you know, at the grocery store. So I, I think it would complement five a lot better by having no fence, no garden. Because a garden is nice and green when it's growing, but then it's dead and kind of ratty when it's off-season. So I'm going to go with the straight no-mow grass because I don't, I don't want to encourage the animals and especially the deer for that area. And I want to make whatever Five Arrow Wood needs to have a beautiful view. Since we're only single-story, they're going to have an incredible front yard. So I'd like to offer that as the correction to the last meeting, if that's in favor.
Thank you. So do we have any more questions? Are we, okay. So I think we're going to bring it back to the commission. Thank you for all of that. I, I'm going to actually open this up to the public and make sure that there's, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this project. Okay, so the public comment period on this is closed. We did have a few commenters last time. So we'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have any additional commission, questions for staff? Any questions with regard to the amended resolution?
I have a question, but not about the resolution. It's more about, again, about this development in general. This applicant has gone to lengths to minimize the view of that, of his house, his proposed house, and, and meet kind of our intent to have it disappear from Drake. And, and there are lots of places in Fairfax that you can see this. Because I run on trails all around town, and it seems like every time I turn around, I'm looking at that site. So even, you know, from Bald Hill to the top of Iron Springs Road, I mean, bottom of Bothene Road, it's very, it's a visible spot. So, but my concern has more to do with the homeowners association there, the fact that they have the CCNRs that request that these houses disappear into the site. And yet this is the only person who's actually trying to do that. And what, what, what's our standing with kind of the overall organization where there's a, there's a house up there that has a white board fence across? And I'll tell you, you see it from San and Selma. And it seems like they're violating their own CCNRs with stuff like that. And yet I'm not sure where we stand with it. So certainly not going to, you know, make it more difficult for this applicant because he's putting the work into it. But I don't know that, I don't know how to handle this development.
You can only, you only get a shot at them in the, at the, you know, when, before they're built. And unfortunately, those two houses that got built, they, all the houses were designed that way. And they had like alternating color schemes, and they all worked together. But it is a bare site. That was approved numerous times by the planning commission and design review. So I, I don't, you know, unless the houses, God forbid, burn down and you're starting over, I don't know that you have any legal control over that.
So even if their own CCNRs say they need to blend into the hillside, it's up to them to enforce themselves?
That's for them to, yeah.
Okay, so my next question is-
You're going to have a shot at the last two houses, you know.
Yeah, but they're better than their sites. But, so at this point, can we ask for a small amount of landscaping in front of fences or trees along the road?
On this one?
To somehow soften? I don't want to put it all on this applicant, though. It doesn't seem fair, but-
Well, you can't, you don't have any right at this point to require something on the other sites. They're already built.
So all we can say is can you plant a few trees to kind of reduce the face of the fence?
For this one?
And that's kind of it.
But I guess the question, the way you're describing it, it's to the, to the settlement? So the question is, does the town have any recourse with regard to the settlement agreement? And talking to the association about, are they meeting the conditions of that settlement?
We're talking about the other two houses now, right?
No, we're talking about houses already built, not, not ones that are going to be built.
Right.
So it's more of a question.
This isn't to do with this applicant-
No.
-in this matter. I would recommend we continue this conversation directly offline.
Okay. So with that said, I, I think in this case-
I think you could include a condition that this, that if, that you want the fence to remain redwood and not become a painted fence.
Yeah, yeah. That's within your purview on this application.
On this one, right.
And I think that's, he's intimated that he's putting a clear coat on it, and that's what's going to happen. But I think I would also like to see a little bit more landscape going on in front of the fence, just to kind of soften the large plane of a board fence. As you look at that area from Drake now, there's these large planes of fencing. And, and I appreciate that it's screening the house, but it's still giving us a wall. So that would be one of my recommendations for trying to reduce, to kind of get it to blend back into the hillside. And I commend you for the amount of work that you've gone into making this work. And thank you for doing that. So I guess that's the long way of saying not much, but that's where I am.
Any other comments?
I would agree with Commissioner Lamont on that as well, that while that sightline from the street is going to be the fence softening that fence, and I love the choice of your redwood. I think that looks fantastic and blends in. I agree, I see that property from other areas as well, other hillsides. I appreciate all your work, working with the commission and trying to work with the, the lighting scheme and, and the colors and things. I think that the colors are very subtle and change. I, I think maybe I was hoping for a little bit warmer, a little darker tones. But I, I do see that you've made effort to try and soften that.
So, and I, I agree. And I'm just trying to think of how we could word something. It sounds like we would need to add a condition 16. And, and I think we could make it that the exterior fence would remain as presented, a redwood fence, softened by landscape planting in front to break up the, the plane of the fence. And leave it at that. And leave that interpretation to staff to, to work with the applicant.
The fire department will have a say.
Right, right.
We'd love to talk with you about the other issue.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think the softening idea is a great idea. I'm frankly happy with the explanation about the lights and the wall, a great redwood wall, which is certainly better than white or colored. And to thank the applicant also for taking the neighbors into consideration here. Something like housing height is a major consideration. And that, that's not well-known in Marin, and it's really appreciated. So should we make a motion to approve this application?
I'm, I'm trying to make sure we have a condition 16 that everybody's okay with. So what I would say is that a condition 16, the exterior fence shall remain as presented, a redwood fence with clear coat additionally softened, if that's the right word, by planting, by landscape planting to break up the plane of the fence.
Maybe clarify that. Landscape planting on the Sir Francis Drake side of the fence.
On the, yeah. Exterior, yeah. So on the Sir Francis Drake side of the fence to break up the plane of the fence. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable. It sounds good to me.
And then all of the other conditions that we talked about last time, thank you for including those as redline markups in this proposed resolution. And I, based on my read, they're all acceptable and meet the conditions that we were talking about.
Yes, the language is fine on those, on those changes.
Is there a motion to approve as amended?
I make a motion to approve Three Arrow Wood Lane, application number 1414, with the revised resolution 1405, adding condition 16. Language we provided about the exterior fence remaining as presented, a redwood fence, and planting to take place in front of the fence to soften the exterior.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So thank you for your patience and working with us. There still is a 10-day appeal period that somebody may file with the town. Five, $500. Just give me a five, but that's 10 days, $500. So check, check with staff as you proceed. Thank you. Okay, now we are ready for item five on the public hearing agenda. 76 Spruce Road, application 14-17.
Okay, this application is to legalize a conversion of a garage and studio workshop area to a 679-square-foot, one-bedroom, second unit. The workshop garage, now second unit structure, is detached from the main house. And the Fairfax Town Code allows application for second units subject to certain regulations. One is that either the primary unit or the second unit must be owner-occupied. And in this case, the owner does live in the main house. Another regulation is that the unit may not be more than 700 square feet in size or 30% of the size of the main house, whichever is more restrictive. And they are limited to studio or one-bedroom units. The, the proposed unit is 679 square feet, which is larger than the minimum 320 square feet allowed by the code because the house itself is very, very small. It's only 955 square feet. However, the 679 square feet is still smaller than the maximum permitted 700-square-foot unit size. The site must also be able to accommodate parking for the main residence as well as for the second unit. The site accommodates the parking for the main house in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And an easement exists for the second unit space to be located at the end of an existing second driveway, partially on the neighboring property at 90 Spruce Road. And the applicant has provided you with the easement to verify that he actually does have the legal right to use that as parking. The second unit shall meet setback, lot coverage, floor area ratio, and height regulations for the zone district in which they are located. The unit is located in a structure that was constructed with variances originally. And there's no proposal to expand that. So the structure itself is legal where it is located. The development will not result in the property being out of compliance with the floor area ratio, height, or lot coverage limitations for the zone that it's in. In order to approve the unit, the planning commission has to make, has to be able to approve certain discretionary permits. And the first we just discussed a little bit, it's a variance to the second unit size limits for the 600, over the 679-square-foot unit. They're also requesting a variance from the covered parking requirement and from the requirement that the parking be provided on the site. The main unit parking is on the private property. And it's just the second unit parking that extends over the property line onto the neighboring property, but it does not extend into the public right-of-way. They're also requesting an exemption from the recorded survey requirement. We originally included that in the code because we were spending a lot of time reviewing applications where people were, were proposing the parking in the public right-of-way. And nobody really knew where the front property line was. And so even though there is a great expense to recording a survey, we put it in to eliminate people trying to capture the public right-of-way. In this case, he did get a surveyor out who verified the location of the property lines. And we feel confident that her survey information is accurate. So we, we think it's fine to not require a recorded survey. And we're recommending that you approve the project, subject to the conditions and findings contained in the staff report.
So do we have any questions for staff?
I had a couple of questions. One, do we know if there was any business license issued at this address? I saw some of that concern in the documentation.
Yeah, there is not because they, they indicated they're not operating a business from the site.
Second, the applicant didn't apply as a second unit amnesty in our previous town amnesty program?
No.
And if it was applied for at the time under the conditions, what would have been the likely outcome?
The amnesty did not waive the requirement for the public hearing. All it did was lessen the fees. And it, the second go-around of the amnesty, it eliminated the requirement for sprinklers in certain, certain locations.
I have a couple of questions. One is on the, the parking that appears to be over the culvert. And I wondered if that is a, is that an issue here?
They showed a spot there, but that's not, we're not counting it. And the driveway already covers that culvert. So they're not proposing to change anything out there. They're not going to be blocking the culvert. They're just going to be putting the parking in the existing driveway.
Okay, the, the second question is indeed we see the easement, the preliminary report. And the easement appears, it's only three feet wide.
That's because most of the parking is on the private property. It just extends three feet onto the neighbor's property. Most of it's behind this structure on the, on this, on 76 Spruce side.
So is, is there parking proposed to be within that easement? And I was just kind of wondering how that, how that would physically work.
Yeah, let me come up and show you.
Right, I'm looking at the plan's, the surveyor's statement. You know, the easement appears to be three feet wide.
So most of the parking is on their property in the second driveway. But this portion extends over the property line. And that's what they got the easement for. But they're, you know, they're requesting setback variance to be in their side yard setback and the neighbor's side yard setback.
Okay, thank you. That, that clarifies that. Thank you.
But was it, that was my understanding, one of the complaints that was brought up was that parking easement into their yard?
I think, I'm not aware of a complaint about this parking easement. I think the complaint was that there are a number of parking spaces on Spruce in the public right-of-way that people are used to using. And some of them have been improved with retaining walls at great expense. And what our code says is if you, you know, if you expend over $10,000 to create a parking space, you can claim it as your own. But if it's just an area that's been carved out of the hillside in the public right-of-way, you know, by digging out the hill, you really don't have the legal right to tell people that it's yours and that nobody can park there. I think that's, that's what the complaints have been. But I know there's a number of the neighbors here, and, and there could be some issue with the parking in the second driveway. It's, it's been that way for quite a while. So I'm not sure if there's issues with that.
So, and I guess I, I want to ask this question now because I think it kind of, I, I want to know how legal, legalizing a non-permitted second unit addresses the nuisance complaints and concerns that were brought forward to the town council. It seemed to me that much of the problem that was raised and concerns raised by the neighbors was actually the presence of that second unit and, and the activities associated with it, parking, et cetera. So I'm just trying to understand how legalizing it addresses the concerns that have been raised.
They have, they have the right to apply for a second unit. And it meets requirements for a second unit. We feel that if you put conditions on it, that the second unit have its own garbage service. One of the issues is garbage. You know, there's parking problems all over Fairfax. If they've complied with the parking, I don't necessarily think it's right to deny a unit that meets all the requirements because there's already a parking problem in a neighborhood.
But, but I'm, I'm trying to understand how-
Well, the council-
If the current use isn't changing, we're simply legalizing the current use. It was the current use that was the concern. So legalizing that current use isn't addressing the problem. And while parking is a problem in town, if it was derived from something that wasn't previously legal, then legalizing it actually aggravates the parking problem as opposed to addressing the parking problem, which wouldn't be as acute if that second, if that non-permitted second unit wasn't being used that way.
Yeah, and it's going through the process. So if you feel they, that they are unable to mitigate issues in the neighborhood, you do have the ability to deny it. And then they would have the ability to appeal.
And it was the complaint that sparked this action, bringing us to where we are now.
Right. And that, I was just trying to clarify and make sure that there wasn't something that was missing. I know there were other concerns and other complaints, but it, it seemed that one of the main roots is-
Yeah, nobody ever wants second units in their neighborhoods. And staff's going to take a position that we're going to- to take a position that we're going to be supporting more of these if they're within walking distance of public transportation, because nobody ever wants a second unit in their neighborhood. Parking is bad everywhere, and the state has charged communities with making it easier to legalize units. So, that's what we're faced with.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Our normal protocol is to allow people to go through this process, to bring it into compliance. And then, again, it's the public hearing. It allows you to hear those complaints and see if there's some middle ground.
Although our actions still are based on the ordinances that we have on the books today, not things that we may have in the future, we have to act on what's in place right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And also, I meant in terms of mitigating any effects. And then likewise, the person that's been aggrieved by any actions, should this be approved, has the same nuisance abatement requesting process for enforcing the noise and other issues.
So another question, and I know that it's, it's quite clear in here that PG&E would re, well, the water district would require a separate water meter. I couldn't get whether PG&E was requiring a separate gas meter or not. I didn't see anything from PG&E.
Yeah, they didn't respond, but what I, what I've, what they've said in the past is if it's a separate building, they do require a second meter. If it's in the house, if it's in, contained in the main house, they don't always require one, so I think they're going to require one in this case.
And so going back to our current second unit, that those separate meters are required, that, that seemed to be one of the things in the amnesty that was waived, was the requirement for second meters.
Well...
But it sounds like the water district never waived that.
What the amnesty said is, it said that it waived it if the agency waived it.
Right, right.
But it didn't give them an exemption, we had no ability to exempt them from other agencies or, you know, requirements.
So, so if we were to proceed and, and with the recommendation from staff, I'm trying to understand what construction would be occurring on-site? So you'd have to come in and put in a new water meter, you'd have to put in potentially a new gas meter. Would there be any actual construction on-site?
Not that I, not that I'm aware of. The building official and I went through there, and it looked like everything was to code. There's no ceiling heights to deal with, or the kitchen's already in, right?
So there'd be no other modifications required? So it would really just be whatever would be part of the utility...
Right.
...requirements, not the applicant themselves? Because I, there weren't any construction...
Because they're not planning any construction, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions?
So we've got a concise letter from one of, from one of the neighbors, but signed by a few neighbors, talking about possible additions to the conditions of approval, having to do with noise and garbage and parking. It seems as though some of it's already done, but do we have any jurisdiction over garbage? I mean, do we ha, can we say you have to have separate service for, I mean, is that, doesn't seem we can to?
Yeah, we're, we're recommending it as a condition, that they have separate service, because a lot of the pictures that have been shown to us, it seems like it's just an over, too much garbage for the site, and so it's a separate unit, you can require a separate, separate service, yeah.
I guess I'm going to leave it there. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Are we ready for the applicant? Okay. So if the applicant would come, state your name and address, and give us any explanation or background that you'd like to.
Hi, Gabriel Harris, seventy-six Spruce Road. We've been there for 11 years or so. Honestly, the, you know, I, I know that there are some opposition to us doing this. Personally, I think that it's more personal issues than, than technical issues regarding the legalization of the unit. There have never been, to my knowledge, complaints about our existing parking, as in the easement and so forth. The complaints have been, one, regarding guests unintentionally parking in the area in front of seventy-seven Spruce Road, which is the unimproved parking, which is actually public parking. That noted, I've always instructed anybody coming to visit not to park on the other side of the street. And the other spot that has been an issue is the area of where my property meets the road, because it looks like there's enough space to park there, and you can park there, and cars can still get by, but if it's a large truck or something is going to block it. I direct anybody coming to visit me not to park there. Generally, it's not a problem. On occasion, I've had like a plumber come that has a large vehicle, and it's hard for them to back into the driveway and so forth, so they park there temporarily. It's never blocked traffic, there's never been an issue with that. And my original proposal, I had included putting, planting a sort of privacy screen in that area that would prevent people from being able to park there, which is something I would like to do, both in terms of the parking issue and the privacy issue. The property directly across from us, Kim Turl's property, is, you know, built very close to the road, within the public right-of-way. It's probably was grandfathered in, and it's two stories, so it looks directly down onto our property, which seems to be a source of some aggravation for her and myself as well. Regarding the garbage, I've recently relocated the garbage to another place. It's not immediately within the view of, of either of the neighbors who were complaining about that. I would be, I would prefer to upgrade my existing garbage plan to accommodate more, rather than having two, two plans with, with the garbage. Right now, we just have a small can. I'm happy to upgrade that to a large can. I don't know, any other questions? I mean, personally, I think that, that legalizing it as a residential unit does actually address some of the complaints of the neighbors, because those complaints have mostly revolved around noise coming from my practicing, playing music. And my alternative to using that space as a rental unit is to use it as a music studio, which I've done in the past. And to me, the, having somebody living there is the quieter alternative of those two, and it would be my hope, you know, that that would be improved conditions with, with the neighbors. Personally, I think a lot of the objection to it is sort of personal issue at the moment, because there have been some aggravated interactions between us over the years, and so... And regarding the business license, I have a business license to run a business, but it doesn't occur on-site. I do workshops, drumming workshops, so forth, so I have a lot of drums on my property, but I don't do those workshops at home. They're all happened at schools, or companies, or so forth, as educational programs, and so forth. I do practice at home, and to my knowledge, I've never been outside of the bounds of, the sound requirements of the town with that. There were a number of complaints over the years, mostly around my previous dog, who was admittedly a habitual barker and very hard to control. She passed away two years ago, and shouldn't be causing trouble anymore. Any other questions?
Well, let me, just to get clear, so the, the, the second unit is proposed to be a rental unit, and you're not going to be using it as a studio?
Um, that, it's not, certainly not as a full-time music studio, you know? You know, if somebody other than me is living there, then, you know, I'm not going to be using it for that purpose. You know, that's not to say that I will not continue to practice music at home, because that's what I do. I'm a musician, it's my profession, I try to be respectful. I practice pretty much exclusively during daytime hours, when hopefully it doesn't bother anybody. I do have a letter from another neighbor, who's right next door, saying that the music is, sound, that sound has never been an issue for them. My general response from other neighbors who I've inquired whether or not it's an issue for them has been a positive one, and not anything negative. Kim is the only one who I've actually received a personal complaint regarding my practice from, and I have inquired with a number of neighbors whether or not it was too loud. I've had people stand outside on the road and listen while I'm practicing, and, you know, short of having a decibel meter out there, I've done what I feel to be right in terms of keeping the sound under control.
Well, let me, let me just ask then, is there any, do you have any consideration whether you would be able to soundproof or insulate the walls, like they do in studios, and kind of have that, you know, foam on the inside walls, that type of thing?
In the, in the studio?
Yes.
I mean, in the proposed unit?
Right.
There are a few things that could be done to improve the sound, like better seals on the doors, I think would probably be the biggest thing, because the doors that are on there, the seals aren't very good, and so I would be happy to include that in, in sound insulation. You know, I don't think that, that you could soundproof it like a, like a music studio in that way, just because of the size and the amount of glass. But I do think that sound could be contained better by sealing the, the doors better.
Are the, are the windows single pane?
No, they're all double-pane windows.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks. If we have others, we'll, we'll let you know. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments. So when you come up, name and address, or Mr. Moore, Ms. Neal, or you guys doing the timer, or?
We don't.
We don't know how to use it. Okay, so we'll go old-style.
I've got this thing up here.
Okay. So it's name, address, three minutes. Thank you.
Stephen Vanny, 104 Chester Avenue, in Fairfax. In reviewing this, one of my concerns is this culvert that runs underneath the driveway. Public Works ran a robot video camera through the culvert underneath the drive, and has determined it in good shape. If the culvert becomes blocked in the future, concerned persons should contact the Public Works Department. I spent eight years on the Fairfax Town Council, going through these problems of trying to eliminate this sort of thing. This is not a town culvert. It doesn't belong to the city. The culvert was put in by the owner, by the builder, to be able to access the property, but in no way does the town put in culverts on private property. And in this, it's saying, if there's a problem, call Public Works. That's, those are my tax dollars going towards someone's private drainage, and, and I just, I, I don't think that should be in there, stated that way. And the other thing in reading here, we talk about a new water meter, but also it calls out for a sprinkling system. And in, how this all came about was that this was, there were tenants in an unpermitted place, and the town knew about it, and here the fire department's saying it needs to be sprinkled. If something ever happened while someone was living there, and the town knew about it, I, I just, I worry about the, the exposure that we're, that we're putting the, the town in. And so those are my real concern, is that, is that we make sure that all of these things are in place, the sprinkling, the new water, the new gas, and actually, the sanitary district calls out for a new lateral also. So when you talk about construction, there will be some construction, and that's basically digging up, you know, the property to put all these new things in place. So there, there is a little bit of not building construction, but underground construction. So, just some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thanks. And I did, I kind of had this question before, but just to clarify, based on the survey that's presented, the private property line is on the other side of the drainage.
Right.
But the town didn't install that culvert, it was installed by the previous owner.
To put the driveway in, correct.
I mean, it's, it's a private improvement on the public right-of-way.
Right. But what, what we meant by that statement is that in an, in a, in a flood situation, if that plugs up, because that, that was one of the issues with the neighbors, is that it, all the culverts, if you get too much water and too many sticks coming down, it will plug up. The street department will go and remove the block in, in a storm situation, so that it doesn't exacerbate the flooding in the area.
Okay. And I, I will have other questions on that, but anybody else from the public, please? Name, address, and three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Kim Turl, I live at 79 Spruce Road. I am, oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me all right? Okay. I live directly across the street from the property. I do get the brunt of the music, the garbage, the parking, and the barking dog. I have spent a number of years trying to work with the owner, and a few times, I thought we had things worked out with regard to drumming and such. One of the last conversations we had, actually probably the last conversation we had, was I was told to put earbuds in, and listen to whatever else I wanted to listen to, and then I received a letter to just contact his attorney. And I did contact the attorney. I left messages, no changes. I left messages about, there's a new dog, Chili, because I'm not comfortable calling him anymore, because I have been referred to an attorney. I did call the police when the dog started barking, it was a new dog, and I explained to the police department, please call them and just make them aware that their dog does bark. I'm not filing a complaint, I just want them aware that the dog does bark. Another neighbor did, in fact. Another neighbor called and was ready to sign a complaint because of the past dog, the previous dog, that had been a lot of barking. I guess the problem is, is I've spent so many years speaking to him, writing letters, trying to resolve these issues, and it's always come down to the police department said, you need to file a complaint. You need to call us every time a car parked across from your truck. You need to call every time he drums. And it eventually came to, well, then you need to file a complaint to abate this unit. This unit, I filed my complaint in August of 2012, and it was January of '14, I believe, before they finally had a submittal. And this is, this is typical. It takes so long, and there's been five tenants and four tenancies there, and I've made the town aware of three of those tenancies, and I've gotten different excuses why they can't do anything about it. So I'm still living with garbage, there's still a lot of cars coming and going. The property owners own, have three vehicles and two trailers that take up a lot of that parking. So when someone does come visit, for the, just today, there was someone across from my truck, and I saw a van squeeze by. It's, it's frustrating, and the quality of life has just been pretty miserable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Hold on. I think what, is there anybody else from the pub, yeah, you, sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Pam Janklow, I'm Gabe's wife, and I live at 76 Spruce. Personally, I think a lot of this stuff has nothing to do with the town. Kim has made so many allegations, which we've never been cited once by the police for any noise. We don't have five tenants that have been there. I happen to be from another country. I, I've lived very differently. I've opened my home to people and friends to come visit and stay. Gabe is a musician. When he tours, he's gone for sometimes eight weeks at a time, depending. I have a kid, I have a little girl, a dog, and a business, and I always ask friends to come over and stay. Personally, I, this has nothing to do with the town, I feel like my privacy is so violated by Kim. I've, people come over to visit. Whether the unit is legal or not, it will not stop my friends coming over to visit, unless there's a law against that. I always try to be courteous, and in the last year, I've had such assaultive, aggressive attacks from Kim... attacks from Kim that I, I don't even listen to her anymore. I have friends coming over asking me why the neighbor's taking photos of them all the time. When I told her, when she keeps telling the police Gabe's running a business out of the home and renting to five tenants, I don't understand how that space could hold both. Doesn't even seem possible. I, when I told it wasn't possible that Gabe could be running drum workshops if he's been on tour for eight weeks, she went, no, actually, he was gone this long. So she's going onto the website, looking up everything about Gabe, const, I feel like my privacy is so violated, and I feel like a lot of this could be taken care of if we had better communication, instead of all this anger that she's vented and poor communication. And sometimes, she, she said how Gabe said, put earplugs in, but she didn't tell you all the times before that Gabe has tried to work with her. I don't think we've ever been cited with one noise violation, one parking violation, or one barking violation from my new dog. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this topic? All right, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. I do have a couple more questions for staff. I bet you can guess what they might be. If you look upstream from Spruce Road where it makes that corner, you'd call it a creek. And then you look downstream from that corner, and it's a, a cement chute, essentially. So is it a creek? Is it a road drainage? What does the town characterize that section of, that creek?
Right now, our ordinance only, we only consider creeks, the main Fairfax San Anselmo Creek. But your general plan says that you will be amending your zoning ordinance, so that any of these drainage swales that carry runoff from rain will, will then become creeks. So eventually, this will be a creek, and the code says you're supposed to try to restore them to their natural state. Of course, existing improvements, we're not going to be having people take out their driveways.
Right. But if, but if there's flooding, because the other question I have is, how often does that site flood? Not, and I, you know, it could be because of many reasons, not just that one culvert.
Can I just, can I, correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, I think what you meant to say is, the general plan talks about creating a policy for the seasonal waterways. It's not that it re-designates it a creek, in the sense that it's a year-round creek, is what we normally call the creek. So it's a sea, I can't remember the actual term.
Our definition of, yeah, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, we are.
It's a, it's a protected area, even though it's seasonal.
And that's what is being asked in the general plan, to come up with a policy for, not the existing round-the-year creeks, but these intermittent waterways.
And it's kind of an interesting question, because it's doubtful that the water originally drained that way. I mean, that whole area, they've, people have culverted and put the creek, the natural drainage under their houses and under all kinds of stuff. So it may not have actually drained that way before everyone built there.
Right.
And the road went in.
It's not the only creek that does that. And then the other question I have, and, and it's interesting, because we've talked about gas stations and how you count parking and things like that, so a gas filling stall is a parking space for a business. How do we count trailers? This is meeting the minimum parking requirement, because it provides two spaces and a third space for the other unit. And if, if there is a trailer and that's stored on site, that's taking up one of those parking spaces.
Yeah.
So technically, it's not meeting the parking. I mean, I mean, do, do we define parking?
The code, the code doesn't regulate what you put in your parking spaces, and, and that's one of our problems, is a lot of times, people don't use their parking for parking. It's a, no, a terrible problem with garages, they don't, people don't use their garages for parking. So there's nothing in the code that says you can't put a trailer in a parking space. If that's an issue with this property, then maybe you need to ask the applicant if he can address that. Maybe you don't want to count the parking that's taken up by an immovable trailer that only moves off the site.
Or it's stored on there.
Right.
All the time, whenever it moves, it's with a vehicle also.
If that's an issue, he would have an option of renting somewhere off-site to store those, if that's a concern of yours.
Because it's just a question about how we count, because there, there are lots of trailers and...
Just count the space. Is the space there and available for a vehicle?
Okay.
We should put that on the code amendment list.
That's the last page of our packet. All right. Other questions?
Are there any police reports that we have filed on this property, complaints from the, the neighborhood?
We haven't been provided with anything, but we also haven't asked them. Yeah.
Do you, can you clarify for me where the trailer is parked as according to the surveyor's statement? Which, which parking spot there?
It seems like it's the one that's...
So it's, it's the one that's like next to the asphalt beam?
Next to the, a berm? I've seen it here, I've also seen it here. The places are, Gabe, it's been there, it's been here.
Primarily, it's here, there's actually room to park another car here. It falls within the public right of way. However, there's room within the driveway to park a van here. There's room to par, actually park three cars here, if necessary. There's actually room to park two cars here, if necessary, and, you know, gravel there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And what we're doing is, we're looking at the surveyor's statement, and there's two marked parking areas, and he was describing that you can essentially tandem park behind both of those. They're not in the, on the private parcel, but they're off the road. Any other questions? Okay. And I did notice, at least this morning when I drove by, that the garbage is over kind of where the mailbox is, essentially down on that side, away from kind of the middle of the driveway, essentially. All right. So are there any comments, discussion? Go ahead.
I guess I, I have several. One, just looking at the size of it, it almost resonates more as a duplex than a secondary unit, when you look at the, the footprint of the original 955 square foot parcel. I think I have a concern of this as a secondary unit, just like I've had other concerns with even expansions of other properties, that when we look at the cumulative effect in a community in its totality, we can sustain one addition here and one secondary unit there, but if everybody starts that as, as a process, it becomes unsustainable. We don't have enough parking. We don't have enough access for sort of everything we need. And then that, in and of itself, just makes me a little uncomfortable with this. But looking at parking concerns and noise concerns, part of my uncomfortableness with that is the legal process is really to file complaints with the police. And I, I think I've raised that on a few other issues with noise issues around Good Earth. That's the tool we have to be able to address concerns. And nobody wants to be that neighbor who calls the police every time a dog barks, or there's noise complaints, yet that's what we can use to make judgments of noise violations or things that, that aren't in accordance with code. And that information becomes really useful if we see that there's a lot of violations and things that aren't happening on the property, or things that, that are happening on the property that shouldn't. So I would certainly encourage that if that's an issue, to, to use the police and file complaints as need be.
I, I, I feel for you guys, because it's a tight spot there. It's a tight corner, it's tight traffic, it's tight parking, it's Fairfax. I happen to live next to people who have habitually barking dogs, and it's crazy-making, crazy-making. And...
Can you speak a little bit, please?
Sure. So I, I have, I have kind of sympathy for both sides here. However, I don't think that, I, I think that legalization of this unit brings more, more of a spotlight to it than not legalizing it. And I think that having a second unit that actually is housing, that has a survey and legalized parking, gives us grounds to, to enforce our, our codes better than, oh, well, somebody's staying there because they're visiting or not. I, I just think that kind of finalizing the paperwork does make a difference, even though I, I don't know that it's going to make the situation any better on the ground. So I, I hear what you're saying, Roxanne, about the cumulative effect of this, but on this, in this situation, I don't see how it would change. It's not an addition of anything, it's, it's, I guess, with the conditions that we have, I feel like we have another instrument to go to them and say, no, these are your conditions of approval, and your use permit will be revoked if it's not complied with. And so we have a little bit more enforcement tool that we didn't have before. So I, I encourage you to try really hard, and I actually also live across the street from a musician who plays until 10 o'clock at night, when my kids go to bed at 8:30, so I'm sensitive to this. And, and, but, you know, we all have to make a living, and we all do what we do. And it just, I would encourage you to try to just get along and talk to each other and park better. And try to make that tight little corner workable, because we don't have any more tools for it here.
I, I guess my other concern is it goes from a garage to a unpermitted utility room, that then a variance is granted to legalize that into a workshop, and then over time, a kitchen goes in and it can be used as a unit. And so we're, again, we're kind of going against the process of how things should be done, and reasons why permits and things go into place, to then say, well, now it's already there, so can we just legalize it? I, I just have problems with some of that.
Yeah, and, and that's, I was just looking at that timeline, too, and it sort of emboldens going out and doing whatever you want, and then getting it legalized after the fact. I also am concerned that, you know, whether it's a fact or not, it, it comes across as a bit of a threat. And I, I respect that it wasn't presented that way, but if it's not rented out, then it will be a studio. You know, so those are the kinds of things where, you know, we're sort of faced with, how do we make the best of the current situation, as opposed to re-go back in time, change things, whatever it is? You know, so I, I think, I would be very interested, if we were approving this, in being very clear about how the parking shall be used. And I think through this, through the conditions that we identify, we can actually say how the parking shall be used, and then that's an enforceable item. And I think, you know, we can, we can maybe improve the situation to some degree, but I don't think we're going to fix. And, and often, we're faced with having to fix problems between neighbors, and we can't very often fix them. And I understand that that's a constraint, that, that's part of the job here. So, but, but I would be interested in, in looking at being even more, yeah, I think, usually I'm not prescriptive, but given the condition and the situation and, and that corner, I think it's important to be very clear about what we're approving, so that it is something that can be enforced down the road. And I, I think it, it is interesting, I don't know that the owners understand that getting a new sewer lateral, new PG&E hookup, sprinkler in the building, and getting a new water hookup is not a simple manner, matter. But I do think, given, given the situation, it improves the condition for that structure. It provides the safety to the community that, you know, should be provided. And I think, if anybody has any ideas for good language on, on some of these conditions or adding conditions, I, I would be open to that. I think, right now, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm not comfortable that it's addressing all of the, the concerns that I have. And the other thing, and I don't think we can really address it through this, but, I mean, what's facilitating more than half of the parking is parking over the top of a public right of way and a public water body. And so I do have, and that's why I want to be restrictive about the parking, not just because, oh, there's space, why can't we park there? But, you know, that's, that's part of the public easement, and, and that drainage is part of the public's, public's right of way. So I, I think that's part of it. It's taking advantage of a lot of area that, that isn't part of the parcel. So, so I would, I think it's new conditions that we have to come up with.
I have a couple of added conditions, I just was writing out here. But one of the things I want to say is, is the, some of these pictures, we've received some photographs from, from, I don't know if you've seen them. Okay. So one of the, some of these pictures are maybe a little unfair, because there's one of a picture of a full garbage can, so it's just before collection or something. But there are others that have, like, cut wood logs out front and, and, you know, work, work implements and, and things like that. So one of the conditions I'm proposing is that applicants shall make an effort to minimize the storage of, or accumulation of refuse in visible areas. Another one I came up with here is, and propose, is that applicants shall make an effort to insulate doors and inside walls of the studio in order to minimize noise leaking out. And, and frankly, I've had such, I've known about, I've been in and around recording studios for decades. You know, those are made airtight. You can't do that necessarily, but we're asking, and I love drums also, but we're asking here that, you know, the noise not leak out, and to comply with the noise ordinance, of course, with times. Lastly, a proposed condition, that since Steve Vanney pointed out, there will likely be some construction, what with lateral, et cetera, that to the extent that there is construction, that roadways shall be kept free of dust and gravel and other construction materials by sweeping them daily if necessary. Every effort shall be made to minimize airborne dust, sand, or other particulate matter during construction. And that, the standard phrase we usually have is that construction equipment and trucks be minimized on the streets to allow for parking. So those are three conditions I came up with that I propose here.
So I'm trying to think of the, another condition and make sure that it's done in a way that's addressing the concerns, which are, that the current, that the parking as shown in, I think we need to say, the parking is shown on the surveyor's statement is, is used as for primary parking purposes, and any additional, you know, tandem parking is, is not. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't want to see the trailer used in the parking place, and then everybody driving in and out is using the others. I'm okay if the car, the primary vehicle is in the parking place and others pull in and park. I don't want to see the trailer sitting right next to the road and then using the, the parking places as shown. So I'm trying to come up with a way of representing that, that...
I, I think if you say, used for primary vehic, primary personal vehic, vehicle parking, right? Wouldn't that cover it?
Yeah. And, and I think what I'm trying to get at is, if other people come and visit and they park behind, that's, that, to me, is different.
Right.
It's, I don't want to see the trailer either forcing parking into the street or, or parked in the street, you know, thereby causing the same problem.
Right.
And, and I, I understand that's a constraint, and it is a, is an impact to the applicant, but at the same time, I think that's the only way I see addressing a lot of the concerns that have been brought up by this, through this application process. So I don't know if you guys feel comfortable with language like that, and you think that it's, it's reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because if it's, if the...
Because if it's, if the, if the conditions aren't complied with, the use permit can always be brought back to you for review and modification or revocation, so.
And I think it also helps to address some of the, a concern of the neighbor. The dog is going to be there, but this helps with the parking on the street.
So, can we be more specific and say, "Storage of the trailers are outside, you know, are not within the designated parking space?"
Storage of the vehicle, a storage of the trailers shall not occur in the primary parking spaces required for the house or the second unit.
Or in the public right-of-way, can we say that?
Yeah. In the driveway. You can say anywhere in the, are you trying to limit it to not being in the driveway at all?
I'm looking at the property boundary. I'm just, you know, then you shove it right up against the studio and it's just sitting there and it's, doesn't look any better. I mean, I think if the fence is moved and there's space created, I guess I'm, that's certainly something that the applicant could do. I just don't want it to go onto the road and I don't want it to be forcing other uses on the road, so. And again, I'm looking at this surveyor's map, so the property boundary is like three feet away from the culvert. So, the culvert's in the public right-of-way, it's not on private property. So, you know, if it's parked over the gravel, over the culvert, that's in the public right-of-way. And I guess that's, I wouldn't want to see it there either because it wouldn't, it would just be forcing the problem to some new place. But if the applicant wanted to, you know, expand, you know, create a space for it on their property that didn't take away from the parking, that certainly would be, it's not taking that right away from them. So, I just want to make sure that we're not, okay. So, do you have language for that? Okay. And that would be in lieu of the primary parking or in addition to like a condition that's talking about the primary parking?
In addition.
In addition?
No, that's part of it.
In lieu of, oh, part of it, okay. All right. Are there any other items? I think the conditions already include something about the garbage. From my perspective, I would be, if a separate, if a larger garbage could meet that condition and it's more affordable, I don't have a discomfort with that. I don't know if anybody else, you know, a bigger can versus two cans.
Yeah, we're okay.
I know the cost might be different.
We're okay with that as long as it contains all the garbage.
Right.
And if it becomes a problem, then we'll have to contact him about coming up with some others.
So, garbage service shall be adequate to support refuse from both the second unit and the main house?
Well, the second unit will need its own cans too.
Well, that's, he brought up the question of can you get a bigger can and have both in one can instead of having two separate? And that's what I was asking is, are we, would we be comfortable with one service but a bigger, a bigger can? I mean, they make bigger ones that we don't all, I've seen a few of the bigger ones around. If it's more affordable, I guess that was the idea.
Another solution to this problem of garbage and perception of what is garbage or not could be resolved perhaps by building a little fence area, you know, not to shield the view of it. If you have to keep things outside, you know, if there's some reason why stuff has to be stored out there, at least shield it from view and neighbors should be a lot happier with that. Is that a reasonable?
Yes, you could require that, that it be contained in some kind of a fenced area that would screen it from view, like the commercial properties have, you know, a lot of them have screens.
And I guess, and I know we've been discussing these a lot, but the question, and it might even be for the applicant, the way that this is presented here in our plan and it's on the sheet four, it's got the photos, it's showing the proposed additions to new parking area. So, it actually is showing the planting bamboo privacy screen, a bike storage, and a retaining wall. So, are you considering that part of the application?
Well, we actually had him remove that from the project because it was in the right-of-way.
Okay.
And we talked to, we talked amongst ourselves and to the town administrator. He felt that if the commission felt that there was a need for some kind of a privacy fence in the public right-of-way, it could be, it could be processed with his variance application. So, you could approve it subject to him coming back with a proposal for a location and design of some kind of a privacy planting if that's, if you felt that that would help the situation.
Like on the?
It could be contained within the property line.
On the property boundary, yeah.
Just pulled back.
Be a weird spot. I get the, the storage unit and things like that. I'm trying to figure out if some sort of visual screening could be beneficial.
Well, they could put up a screen and, you know, put the garbage cans behind a fence that followed the property line. There'd be room. You'd eliminate the ability to park in there.
Right. I'd be interested just to hear if there's any from the applicant.
A couple of things. First off, where the, where the garbage has been moved to is very much out of view of the neighbors. As far as I can tell, it's kind of tucked into the bushes. To try to enclose that would be kind of difficult because you'd have to push them further back into the bushes. And right now, it's, that would require cutting some of the protection from my yard as it is. I mean, they're, they fit nicely there. You know, if there's continuing complaint about them, then maybe we could address it. I don't think that, I think that where they are now would be better than building something in a space that's adequate for it. I mean, I think they're very much out of the way now. And what was the other?
I think that question was the, during your presentation, you'd mentioned like a, like bamboo privacy planting or something like that and if you were to do that on the property line itself.
If I were to move it into the property line, it would take up a big piece of what is now usable space. There's a small, there's a retaining wall, there's the existing garage proposed unit, and then there's a gravel patch that also can be used for parking if need be. And then there's a short retaining wall. And where I propose to put a screen would be at the top of that retaining wall on the side of the road, also for the purpose of preventing people from parking there. If I were to move it onto my property, it would basically eliminate the use of the flat gravel area for parking or for other purposes. And it would also lose three feet of height because it would be coming down off of the retaining wall.
Okay, yeah, I can see that. And I think, thanks for that explanation. And just because I was wondering what this heavy line is on the surveyor's drawing that sort of comes out from the studio and down kind of parallel to the road. And that's, that's that low retaining wall that you're talking about, the small two-feet retaining wall is shown on the, on the, on the map as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so we've had some discussion, we've got some ideas for if we're going to approve I think what, I actually feel like even with condition 10 as proposed, like you were talking about, that the way that the garbage was, at least those cans were set as I went by this morning, kind of over by the mailbox, I think meets that condition. At least that's my interpretation. I don't, as long as it stays there, I don't see needing to have to build a structure to enclose them, but it's moved them to a place. And I hate to be so prescriptive, but I do think this condition is usable if they kind of find their way back out into the middle, that that could be used. The sound conditions, I think, are, you know, just to address some of the concerns, you know, it's not professionally engineered, but it's getting towards making it, taking a shot at addressing that problem. And then it looks like Commissioner Lamont has written down a lot of notes for that parking item. Are there any other conditions? I would, I would, I think I would feel comfortable just proposing that on recommended condition one, just saying, revising it to say, "Garbage service shall be adequate to meet refuse produced by the main house and second unit." And then, you know, if stuff's hanging out, then pushes it to the next level.
So, would it be a second condi, would it be a second condition or kind of a close to that first one that says, "Avoid accumulation of refuse in visible areas," just in general?
I suppose we could add that as a second sentence to the first condition rather than have a separate condition. So, revise condition one that says separate, or garbage service shall be adequate to meet refuse produced by the main house and second unit. And then add a new sentence that says that the applicant, or the property shall minimize accumulation and storage of refuse from invisible areas. Maybe switch those two sentences around, but either way, they would, they might read better the other way. Okay. Any other comments?
So, then the next, the next condition is parking as shown on the survey is used for primary personal vehicle, vehicle parking. Do we want to add the prescription? And storage of trailers shall not occur in the primary parking space or pushed into public right-of-way. And then Phil added kind of our construction language for maintenance of the street and public, so that would be the fourth condition added.
And then I think you had a good reading of the sound condition.
And the sound condition, right. Applicant shall make an effort to insulate doors and inside walls of the studio to minimize noise leaking out.
All right, so we've talked through a lot of conditions. Is there anybody willing to make a motion with these conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the conditions added and language amending other conditions. Application number, pardon, 76 Spruce Road, parcel number, no, application number 14-17.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
So, you have a motion and a second. Does staff feel comfortable that you, we've repeated it enough that you'll be okay? All right. I'll do a roll call vote. Roll call. Make it tough on you.
No.
Aye.
Aye. So, the motion passes as amended. There is an appeal process. It's a, within 10 days, that appeal has to be brought to Town Hall. It's $500. So, definitely check in with staff if there's any more action on this. Do we need to take a short break? It's 10 of 9. Are we good to keep going or are we okay? We're going to keep rolling?
I'm fine.
All right, we're going to keep rolling. Thank you. So, we have lots of patient folks waiting for, or at least some patient folks waiting for Hillside Drive, 232 Hillside Drive.
The applicants are proposing construction of a 924-square-foot pool surrounded by a patio with a total impervious surface for both totaling 2,832 square feet. And southeast of the pool, the applicant is proposing a 1,372-square-foot cabana storage structure. The applicant has also included an application for a use permit to legalize a 506-square-foot living quarters for their au pair in the basement. The proposed project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits. A hill area residential development permit because of the size of the accessory structure and the amount of excavation. It is kicked into being subject to our HRD ordinance. They need an excavation permit because the project will require the excavation of over 100 cubic yards of material. And then it requires a use permit. They're in, they're located in the upland residential zone, which allows for, for living quarters for persons employed regularly on the premises. And so, the property does already have a second unit, a detached cottage, but there's nothing in the code that prohibits living quarters for persons employed on the site. The town engineer has reviewed a number of geotechnical reports and the project plans and he finds that the project can be built without creating any problems for any adjacent neighbors or for any public roadways or improvements. And therefore, we're recommending that you approve the project based on the findings in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions contained in the report.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
When we do the cut and fill calculation, do we know how much cut and how much fill?
And it's somewhere in there.
Just more to begin to understand the number of trucks going up and down because if there's X number of, I mean, if it's all.
I'm going to let the architect address that because I think some of it, some of the fill may be staying on site. Can you address better the amounts of excavation and what's staying on site and what's being hauled off? Because I can't call it to mind right now.
I'm going to have to apologize for my hearing. I just have real trouble with acoustics in here, so if you could speak up a little bit.
Okay, so what they're asking, and I can dig through stuff and try to find it, but they're asking for a better explanation of the amount of excavation and fill that's occurring and how much is going to be taken off-site and how much is remaining on-site. They're trying to figure out the number of truckloads that might be coming in and out.
Okay. That's on the cover sheet. The tabulation of the excavation. And it's broken down, it's broken down by areas.
And?
And Ray Rosinsky reviewed that and thought the excavation was.
Oh, I see. It's right on the first page of the plans. Yeah, I knew I'd seen it, couldn't remember where.
Just right at the beginning.
While we're looking at that, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. On the memorandum to Linda Neal from Ray Rosinsky of March 3, 2014, there's a mention that there were some documentation required that has not been delivered. And I was wondering if it has been delivered now.
Yeah, there should be two memos from Ray attached and you should be looking at the most recent one because they did provide the, he was concerned because the survey information and the legal description didn't result in a closed property. So, they did provide the required calculations to close the property lines. Is that the one you're talking about? Is that the?
Well, this is on the memo of March 3, so.
Right.
The material has been received.
Yes, and he's approved it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, the letter of April 14, or April 30, 2014 is sort of his approval, right?
Right, right, in a wordy kind of way.
You wouldn't have gone forward with it without that letter.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
One question. Is it possible for us to ask a pool owner to, in an emergency situation, dedicate their water to the fire department?
I wouldn't do that. I don't even know if the fire department, I know in the olden days, they used to pump from pools, but.
Not so olden. Recent earthquakes in Los Angeles, they had to do that.
I mean, you could ask if the applicants, have you ever had conversations with the fire department about that, about using your pool water? Because they have tanks, they've had to put in tanks. They have water tanks on their property. So, the applicant might know, the owner might know more about.
Yeah, we actually have three tanks. We have 45,000 gallons. We have our separate fire suppression system. And we sort of threw that around. And we sort of threw that around with Rob, and he was like, you know, he was like, not, not very excited about that idea because we're so, I mean, of course, they could if they needed to in an emergency, but it's not something he latched onto.
Away from, you know, it would help to, for their site and maybe for the hillside if the hillside was on fire, but they couldn't get the water to any of the homes, probably.
But these tanks actually feed a fire hydrant, a private fire hydrant.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
I've had experience with projects on hills in San Rafael. Sorry. The experience we've had is that the fire department finds that the swimming pool's just not big enough to, to rely on that for fire suppression. So they, they know it's there and they like that it's there, but they don't rely on it.
Any other questions? Or you ready to open it up to the applicants? All right. You guys were already up there, but come on up. Name and address.
Rich Rushton from Rushton Chartak Architects. On the wall here, I've put the site plan, which was a master plan that was presented to the planning commission in 1995 when the house was built. And the house was, at that time, approved. But part of the reason for showing that is to show that the intent was always there to have the pool and to have another structure as well. So what you see is Hillside Drive on the lower right-hand side, and then the driveway going up past the fire hydrant, up to the top where there's a fire department turnaround and the second unit, and then to the left of the road is the main residence. That's the fire department turnaround. The second unit and the main house on the left. When you're up on the site, if you've been up there and looked around, you can see, if you look out to the hills, you really don't see any houses anywhere. And I've, in my travels around Fairfax, every time I get the opportunity to look in that direction to see whether I can see it, I have never been able to see it, no matter where I've been. Now, part of what we did when we placed the house was to locate the house lower than the adjacent contours, so that further sort of hides the house from view if anyone could see it. We did the same approach with the cabana. The elevation down here below the site plan shows how the cabana sort of recedes into the hillside, so it's partially below grade. And the, the ridge line is 13 feet above the floor line, but the average height above the adjacent grade is about 10 feet high, so it's, it's a very low profile. The cabana is an open-air pavilion used for viewing, for sitting, and a game area, and features a rumpford fireplace, a changing room, and a shower toilet area. Materials include stone paving, clay tile roof, and siding painted to match the house. Existing contours surrounding the building and pool are largely unchanged, and the vegetation remaining, remains in its natural state. Runoff, water runoff is diverted to dissipators, and the natural swale on north slope carries surface water directly to the storm system that was designed when the house was built. So I can answer any questions.
Okay, just so folks can hear, it was, the third unit is within the main struck, the main house. It's on the lower floor? Yes, it takes up half of it back here. Okay. Thank you. All right, any questions for the applicant? So I guess two questions since it was brought up. The, the disposal, the 350 cubic yards is gonna be off-hauled? Is that the plan? It says it's gonna be removed. Is it, so it's gonna be hauled down the roads and?
Yeah, well.
To a disposal site?
I don't have the figures in front of me.
No, it's, it's 350 yards is what your off-haul calculation is. I just.
Right. Where it says off-haul, that's right.
Right. So it's gonna be taken away from the property down the roads, which I think was the main question that we were trying to confirm. So you're using a, some, some on-site, but not, maybe 60 yards on-site and everything else is gonna go away? Okay.
Right. We considered trying to put some of it on-site, but that creates instability and sort of changes the topography of the land.
Is this pool designed in any way energy-saving? I mean, such as being four feet deep all around or having a dark bottom or anything like that?
I'm sorry, I'm really having trouble hearing. You wanna?
Yeah. Not necessarily. I think right now what we're thinking about is the deep end kind of in the middle with two shallower ends on the side. We don't have a black bottom going on at this point. But, you know, we'll have a pool cover and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going through this quickly. The other question I wanted to confirm, so we're adding a bathroom, is this facility on Ross Valley or is it a septic? I'm sure it's in here, but.
It's on, it's on City Store.
It's on, on Ross Valley, okay. That's, I just was double-checking. Thanks. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll open this up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this application? No? Okay. Close the public portion, bring it back to the commission. Any further questions or comments or?
Was that the material?
No, that, that's for the next application. Yeah.
I think it's a nice design. It's an amazing site, and this is gonna be an amazing amenity, and I love how it's nestled into the hillside, and I don't see any, I don't see any problems with it at all.
Any other comments?
I echo the same sentiments, I think, from the plans that are drafted up. Yeah, it looks like a lovely addition.
Me too. And Rushton, Rushton Chartak is a terrific, thorough architect, and I appreciate the detail you provided to show us how beautiful this is.
Just playing us, isn't he? Yeah, I think, and I know there were some questions around drainage and things like that, but you couldn't have chosen a more, this is right at the top, very subtle. It's not gonna generate it, really, any new runoff. It's really.
Ray takes care of looking at the drainage.
Right. So, anyone ready to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve two thirty-two Hillside Drive, or, yeah, Hillside Drive, application fourteen nineteen as presented.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? So the application passes. There is the 10-day appeal period, as I've mentioned earlier. $500 if anyone has questions, so check with staff before you proceed. Thank you. All right, and go. The next one on the agenda is Nineteen Manor Road, application fourteen dash sixteen.
The applicant proposes expanding the 1,379 square foot structure into a 2,358 square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, single-family residence and constructing, and this is a correction to the staff report, it's actually a 411 square foot one-car garage, not the 330 indicated, and a seven-foot, one-inch fence trellis structure along the front property line. The site is located in the residential RD 5.5 dash seven zone, which allows single-family residences on lots of 5,500 square feet and duplexes on lots of 7,000 square feet. So this 9,600 square foot site is actually large enough to accommodate a duplex, two living units, but the owner has chosen to improve and expand the single-family residence. The proposed structures comply with all the standards set forth in the RD 5.5 dash seven zone. They actually exceed the side yard setbacks. It's lower in height than the maximum permitted 28.5 feet, or it will be once the, once the pro, once the house is modified with the different roof slope. It requires the discretionary, the big discretionary permit that's required is a use permit because the lot is in irregular shape, and so it doesn't meet the minimum 60-foot width requirement at the street. It does require design review because it's a 50% remodel, and the design incorporates, I just lost my place, excuse me. It incorporates craftsman-style detailing with a wraparound covered porch on the southwest corner and board and batten siding. The window sizes vary in shape and size, and the exterior provides articulation so, so as to avoid monotony in the external appearance of the building. The garage also combines board and batten and horizontal siding along with the redwood fascia trim, which emulates the design features of the house, and you can find similar architecture throughout the neighborhood. The applicants are requesting two variances that staff was unable to support. They, the location of the garage required one of the parking, one of the uncovered parking spaces, a corner of it to project into the required side yard setback, and with a minor modification, setting the garage back maybe a half a foot to a foot, you can get the parking out of the side yard setback. So we're recommending that that be included as a condition. We also were unable to make the findings for the front, the fence to exceed the permitted six feet in height. There's no elevation changes or anything that would warrant the need for the extra height. So even though the design is nice, we think they can accomplish that in the six-foot height limit. So we're recommending approval of the project, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report and based on the findings. That would conclude. Oh, you do have their materials board up there somewhere? Yeah.
So just to confirm that the, the changes you've described are conditions two and three of the recommended conditions. Fence shall not exceed six feet, and the garage shall be relocated one foot further back to accommodate the second parking space. Got it?
So I have a question for staff. I understand the adherence to the fence height, but in this original design, the fence itself was five and change, and then it was a trellis structure above and open space between, is that right?
Right.
Which, in, in my mind, gives us less of a fence face along the street than going to the full six feet. And so I don't know.
Well, the code, the code says the fence cannot exceed at any point six feet in height, and you have to be able to make a finding that there's some need for the extra height. We've been through this before with fences. Staff tried to, we actually had a combined meeting with the commission and the council a long time ago to try to let design features like this be approved by a zoning administrator at a staff level, and there was no interest at that time in that, and the code wasn't amended. So there's no physical reason why they can't incorporate a trellis and fence in a six-foot height.
So we can't grant a variance simply on aesthetic value?
The finding, the findings for variances are, are in the code. You want me to pull them out for you? Okay. Yeah, they're.
It just seems, it seems a shame that we have an opportunity to actually make a structure that is better looking than a six-foot-high fence, which actually shuts down the streetscape when we could have a five-foot-high fence with a beautiful trellis on top and probably some beautiful plants with steeria in the spring. It would be beautiful. And instead, we're stuck with this big plane of a fence again because that's what our, I mean.
Well, I think the architect did a very nice fence that was six feet with a four-foot solid fence and the trellis, and he managed to keep it to six feet on his house on Wood Lane. So you can still have a nice trellis design without going over the, the six feet.
If, if the trellis wasn't attached to the fence?
No. So. No, we've, we've had other situations where there have been variances because of safety or some other reason, and in those cases, we, I think we came up with something like 50%. Like it wasn't a solid mass that, you know, it's like, it was pickets, the idea of pickets or something where there's space, transparency. There's a great fence on his, I think it's on Azalea. It used to have that trellis look on top. Now they just boarded it in. So, you know, you kind of get the opposite of the open on the bottom and, and boarded on top so people can't see.
Your frustration's understandable, and unfortunately, as often is the case, we're restricted by the variant, the conditions you have, or the circumstances you have, the findings you have to make based on the variance conditions. So we should put it on the code revision list? I'm sorry?
Can we add this to the list, please?
Yes, yes, noted.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Because this discussion is already happening, my concern is that you're actually gonna mask the fence and the beautiful fence and garage because all of the parking is right in front of that. And so what guarantee do we have that that garage is gonna be used as a garage? And are we just gonna have three cars parked right in front and it doesn't matter what the fence looks like? So that's kind of what my concern was. Is, is that this great streetscape view would actually just be three cars parked right up against the fence, and there is no good streetscape view. So anyways, but I think we want to open it up to the applicant and proceed. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for reviewing this project. My name's Michael Pettit. I'm the architect for this project, and staff pretty much gave a, a pretty thorough analysis of the project, and I'm, I just want to reiterate the fact that we're within all of our, our volume, our setbacks, FARs and all that. We're, we've tried to comply with that, and I really have no issue with the proposed revisions as far as the garage going back a foot. I thought we had that covered. That was my bad on that one, but we're happy to do that as far as the fence in the front goes. I appreciate your comments, but I think that, you know, based on staff's recommendations, we can, we can design a fence within the regulated height that will be acceptable within the similar character to what we have there. So with that, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have, and, and thank you again.
So I had a couple of questions. One that I'm curious about is, I know this doesn't flood very often, it's sort of on the, on a terrace, but what is the benefit of having a sunken? And I know it's not a floor to represent a basement, but what's the benefit of sinking that down? It seems to me that that just becomes a water trap and a pain to manage in the long term.
Let me say that I came on this project after that particular element was already in place. That's an existing basement, so to speak. That area was already built under a previous permit application, so, and the owner took a lot of care to ensure as much as possible that that would not occur in the way he, he built it. It's very substantial structural element in the ground, and so when I came in the project, I had to work with that particular thing, so I can't really answer your question about that other than he, he did take a lot of care to try to ensure, obviously, that that would not have water in there.
Yeah, I was just curious, given that it's so close to a creek. That's the first thing that I think about is water in the basement.
I think that's also part of the reason it's, the building is elevated where it was at the time. He was concerned about that, and he wanted to make sure that, that if it did occur, he wouldn't get into the house.
No, and it fully made sense that it was elevated, it was just why it, why it's, you know, I could see slab at grade or something like that as opposed to being sunken, and it's just a trap. Because it is only six feet, it's not a story. That's not the concern that I had. All right. Other questions?
Well, the, the house is currently unoccupied.
That's correct.
And it's.
And it's, um, so, so this, you know, suggesting this is a, a major improvement to it, to, to get it occupied and occupiable, and it'll be?
Oh, absolutely. We worked with a much of, as much of the existing structure as possible, um, but it really wasn't in this, in, in the shape that it could be for, to be inhabited at this point. So yes, we're upgrading it significantly.
Um, based on the, um, the photography we have, um, it appears that the, the roof line will be completely changed.
The roof line is going to be revised. It's actually gonna be lower than the existing structure out there by about two feet. Uh, one of the concerns was to try to get that mass down as much as possible, and so that's why I went with the shallow roof pitch.
Yeah, it, it is pretty ugly out there now, so.
And then we're trying to work on that.
And, and then the garage will, will basically match.
Yes.
Is the idea, so I, I like that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
One quick question. Is there a reason that you're removing the fruit trees?
Well, the fruit trees, the fruit.
Well, specifically the really nice apple tree.
Um, that was a recommendation of the landscape architect to, uh, one of the concerns we had was creating some type of a, a vegetation buffer for the neighbor's property. We wanted to create something that would grow up fairly quickly, and he was concerned the location of that tree would be problematic for the new planting. Um, I mean, that's something that we could, we could look at, but, um, other than that, I, I don't really have, uh, anything specific on that.
Well, I, I happen to live on Manor Road, and deer come to that tree, and it's really nice to kind of have that as part of the landscape of the neighborhood. Once you're living there, you probably don't want a deer in your yard, but, um, but it used to be a really great lot that had a lot of wildlife and quiet things going on.
Sure.
Um, so it seems, it would seem nice to be able to kind of maintain kind of the older part of it since you're maintaining the house, so just, just a thought. I don't think that the Photinia hedge needs the removal of the fruit trees to thrive personally, so.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Any other questions? All right. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we'll open it up to the public if anyone from the public has any comments on this application. You guys waiting long? I expect some comments here.
My name's Robert Biffus, and I own seventeen Manor Road next door. So this has been, uh, quite a nightmare, this whole thing. If you live, you, you know the story, and it still is now that, due to the fact that the city has moved all of their equipment in to do the road, which they finished long ago and kept their equipment there anyway. So it's just gone on and on, and I understand that Mr. Lutkey got a free lateral based, you know, since he let them use that property, which was probably a twenty thousand dollar deal for him, which was great, but it was at the expense of his neighbors. So it's been going on a long time. Uh, my concern is, you know, already my property's been compromised and devalued by the fact that, uh, Mr. Lutkey moved the house right next to the, real close to the fence line, right within the legal limit. It's a huge mass. It blocked my sun, my view, and it's unsightly, and it's had a blue tarp on it for the last few years. It rattles around. But, you know, we're looking forward to, the best I can hope for now is that I can get some of that value back. I don't think I can get it all back because of the placement of that house. And my hat goes off to the architect, cause I'm sure, I would hate to be dealt that hand, somebody moving a house there and going, okay, now, work with that. That's gotta be tough. And, uh, you know, I hope we can work together on this thing. I would love to see that house moved away, but since he's already built the foundation and raised it to the limit, uh, I don't see that happening. That'd be great if he tore it down, which it should, it was a tear down, and it still is, in my opinion. And it is inhabited, by the way, which I was just reminded, there are probably hundreds of rats in there, which have been going to the neighboring houses and yards, and my tenants have been complaining about it. But, uh, anyway, it, it's definitely a tear down, and it would be great if it was torn down and resituated, uh, but that's probably a dream. Uh, so anyway, the, the next thing I'm curious about is, I understand the building's coming down a foot and a half or two. Is that from the, the, the line that we see now? Uh, or is that still gonna be the pitch, and it's just gonna be a pitch that's coming down? Or is it the whole, the whole thing's coming down a foot and a half? Okay, that's, that's good. I'm all in favor of that. And the landscape plan, I don't see any landscape plan, and I think that is where I'm going to be, benefit the most from moving forward at this point because, is it there? Okay, so.
The last sheet.
I, I know that there's, uh, I don't know how I missed that. The, I don't know what's being planted, but I think that that has to be monitored closely and carefully, because a lot of times people propose things, and they will plant trees that have no sun, uh, and other, other areas. Okay, yeah, great, thank you. So I don't know if those are, I'll look at this more carefully later, but, you know, as far as masking that, that mass outside of my house, which where the house was moved, I don't know what can be done there to, you know, soften that a little bit. I imagine, you know, planting some trees along there if there's any room, cause he's very close, you know, that would maybe get twenty-five or so feet high would help. Obviously, I don't want too many trees too high that can block more. I've already lost some sun. I don't want trees planted where I'll lose more sun. And that's, are these trees here? Let's see. I wish I was up to speed on this a little bit better, but, uh, you know, I just want to be careful that the landscape plan is adhered to and that maybe we have a chance to revisit it if it is approved as far as, you know, more sun being blocked, or maybe different plants that would grow better with that exposure, because a lot of times things are proposed and they're the wrong situation for the, the wrong specimen for that situation. And, um, as far as the parking, is that, I, I agree with what you said about it could turn into, or not to quote you, but that front area could turn into a parking lot. I mean, you could literally have people putting motorhomes and old cars in front and, uh, you know, it would, if, if the variance is granted to that area, I could see a lot of cars. That would hold a lot of vehicles. And my other, a, a major concern of mine on, as far as the landscaping is, if you'll see, if you can see on there that my house, my, I have a porch that looks directly down on the garage area. And, uh, if you, I don't know if you have that particular piece of paper, but it will look, I will look directly down where the garage is going to be built. So I would like some kind of a, a screen in, you know, on, on my side of, on, uh, my side of the yard, so that when we open the door every day in and out, the first thing we don't see is whatever is accumulated, you know, a lot of people, a lot of times garages are messy, and the sides of them are, and if there's parking along, there's gonna be a car there, I understand now, as well, uh, or not, but it, I think it was proposed. Next to the garage, I think there was one space that was, they're asking for? Not next, you know what I mean?
I, I just wanted, just so I'm clear on, so are you, are you closer to Marin Road or are you closer to Olima Road in terms of the neighbor? We, we have.
I'm, I'm the furthest from Olima. Yeah.
So you're on the Marin, the Marin roadside? Okay.
So if you see that little bump out up top?
Yeah, yeah, I, I got it on this.
That's my door going upstairs.
Got it. Thanks.
And the first thing we see is that, uh, is, is that area. And, uh, I'd, I'd love to show you this, this real quick. Could you guys look at a picture? Okay. It's, uh, it's. This is, this is actually, this is city, some of it is city, but it hasn't looked much better than that in the last two and a half years. It's been a disaster. Now, we're not, I don't know, that's basically where the garage is going. So I would have some kind of a screen from this view.
From the.
Free, a nice, some kind of a screen, whatever's going on out there.
Okay.
Staff could just.
All right, I think that, did, did you guys?
Well, I just wanted to comment. He, I think what I heard is, is the gentleman asking that there, that the applicant plants something on his side of the fence. I would not make that a condition. He's planting things on his side of the fence.
I'm not saying that. No, he's asking that, that, that the screening continue all the way up to the, towards the road.
And it does.
Right now, the way it's showing, at least on the landscape.
I thought it continued all the way up to the existing hedge.
Yeah, to the, so it says existing hedge to remain.
Right.
So that's, that's what's in the landscape plan is the hedge that's there at the property boundary right now would remain.
And it seems like he's asking for trees.
He's asking for something more substantial, it sounds like.
Higher, higher screen.
Yeah, because a hedge is, what is it, six feet a hedge? That won't do much.
Okay.
It would be great to get something much higher so that.
Okay.
And I don't know, can, how do we go about, I mean, where do you go from here if it's approved? I mean, what is that, stipulated or is it?
So we'll, we, we're gonna be bringing this back. We've been, as we've done with all the others, we talk about comments, we talk about conditions if we're gonna add them and, and how prescriptive we might be. So that's certainly something that, that we'll be discussing right as soon as the public portion of this comment process closes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public? Let me see if there's any other comments from the public.
I just wanted to.
You wanna clarify?
Yes.
His, okay. We'll keep it quick.
I just wanted to point out a, a couple of things about his, his concerns, and I think we tried to address those. First of all, they're proposing a new fence at the property line, and if you notice where the planting is located on that side, we're trying to, uh, create a, a landscape screen at the area where the garage is and into the yard. So I think we made a, a good faith effort on that, on those particular items. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public? Please give your name and address and try to keep it to three minutes. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Richard Carson, and I own twenty-one Manor Road, and I've seen the plans. I like them. They're very good. Everything looks really nice. My question is, when is it gonna get going, and how long is it gonna take them to do it? How long are you gonna give them? It's been like four years now. I'm tired of looking at that piece of junk, that rat house, basically. I mean, it's probably infested. Do you have any, any plans or stipulations on this?
So typically, it, the permits are valid for a year. I know in some cases, we've, we've put some timelines in terms of completion within a period of time.
Yeah, another project that was, the never ending project, you, um, the way you handled it is you asked the applicant for an estimate of how long he thought it would take, and you did include a condition that it be completed within that time. Um, it's, it's hard to enforce. I mean, if someone falls on hard times, you can't force them to finish, but, but it does give us some leverage, because if they don't comply with that condition, we can bring them back before you, and they can explain why they aren't making progress. So it is, it is a little bit of teeth.
So any other?
My comment to that is stay on them, because I'm tired of looking at it.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. So given that, um, can we ask the applicant what the anticipated timeline is for completion?
Uh, well, first of all, we obviously have to go get a, prepare a set of documents for a building permit. That takes a little, some time. Uh, once the permit is issued, um, my understanding from, from the applicant is that he intends to proceed in a timely manner in the construction of this project, and I think Linda mentioned it, a one-year period of time that's allowable for building. I would doubt it would take that long, but I would certainly think it would be within that timeframe that he should be able to do that project. We haven't actually talked about that yet. We were trying to do first things first and get this approval, um, but I, pending approval at the planning department, we're, we're gonna proceed with construction documents as soon as possible and, and get those in for, uh, permit.
Okay, and what I was saying was you need to initiate construction, so it sounds like you want to initiate, um, as soon as you can.
Yes.
What's an anticipated construction timeline from when you start work on it for that scale of the work that's being done?
I, I would say we're in the six to nine month range, something like that. I, I don't know for sure, because I'm not, I don't believe he's picked a contractor yet and done all that scheduling work, um, but, I mean, we could, we could provide that information upon permit if that's necessary, but I think we're gonna be within the timeline that's required by the town to do it.
Okay. Thank you. So, see, somebody else from the, like to make a comment?
Hi, good evening. My name's Sean Aguilar. I reside at twenty-one Manor Road, which is next to the subject property. Good to see you again. Last time I was here was about a year ago, in front of the council. A couple of things I can probably help you is, uh, his contractor, I think he has his own crew, cause I believe one of the members are right here, and they tend to do all the, the work that I've seen around there, so he may give some visibility on what that timeline looks like. Uh, in reference to, it's good to see something happening. Uh, one of the other owners made a comment about the rats and the dirt and the dust. I have two kids. One of them has asthma, and I can tell you, over the years, it's been really terrible and bad, especially lately with the water sewer lines work being done. You know, we were great, we were happy that the work got done in front with Rangers Pipeline, and it was our understanding that they were just gonna use that lot to do Manor Road and then move out to the other projects and find space out there. What unfortunately happened is, I guess they lost their space with the town in Selma, San Onofre, and they stayed there until recently, until the town had, the town in Fairfax had a move. But they were working up to Saturdays dumping dirt, gravel and everything, and, you know, we get no economic, financial benefit out of it, but clearly that landowner has. So that said, it's interesting listening to you guys, uh, comments today with the other different applicants and stuff, and it seems like a majority of the people that come in front of you are actually owner occupants, and they reside in, in that, in the property. And when I was looking at the paperwork on the applicant's submission on the, uh, drawing or whatever, it said the, Letzky, or I can't, I forget his first name, Residence, I don't believe it's his intent to occupy the property. And it's been my understanding it never has, and I can tell you, I've never met the man. He's never come by to introduce himself or never came by to let us know his, his intentions. And so usually you have that kind of behavior from somebody that's gonna occupy. And my understanding is he's a real estate, you know, developer speculator, focuses on the single family residential market, flips them and stuff like that. And I know in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, after he bought it, he was undercapitalized, and that's why we got no movement on the project. So I'm not really convinced he's capitalized today at the level he should be to do this. I'm more of the impression that he's trying to get an approval done so he can turn with the plans and specs and sell it out to the open market. And I say that just because of the history of the individual from the business ethic side of it, and plus I've had and seen realtors come by the subject site and have these conversations. And plus, after hearing his architect and people speak that, I'm in the business of what these guys do, and I can tell you, when I work with clients and owners, we know everything from A to Z, what we're doing, how we're doing it, how we're gonna execute. And we got like half the story tonight, so I'm not convinced about what's, what's really transpiring here. Going back to the beginning of last year and reading your guys, reading, uh, staff's comments, you know, originally he was supposed to, uh, do a remodel as is, and he's pulling the building up. And what kind of, what I like to see is that still be honored. You know, I'm a little miffed that he gets the benefit of increasing his living square footage by a thousand, a thousand square feet, and I feel like the system's being gained here. And the other thing in staff's report that I saw that I wish it had a little more visibility, it does reference that he did increase the height, but it doesn't say by how much. And, you know, I don't have a measuring stick, but. And, you know, I don't have a measuring stick, but I'm sure it's anywhere from four to six feet. That was a pretty big fat foundation that got laid. And so, you know, I'm glad to see the roof line come down half of that, but I'd like to see it come down all the way, because quite frankly, again, I think what he originally bargained for with that footprint is what he should build on and replicate. I don't think he should be given the benefit from the pat history and everything of being able to produce what he's producing, where I'm convinced he's not gonna be occupying it. And so I have some reservations, because I've been living with this thing for four-plus years, and it's been a catastrophe. And he's, and I'm not convinced he's capitalized to do it, and so if you were to move forward, I would suggest you, I don't know if you can require a performance bond or anything, but, you know, I just don't see it happening, because again, his trade is in the business as a speculator developer. And I don't even know if he lives in the area, but then again, I go back to what I said earlier. When I look at the majority of your applicants today, they're all owner occupants, they're residents of the area. I don't really know if that's the case here, or if he's relocating, but again, I'm not convinced he's relocating, because I've never met the guy. It's just the behavior's not there. So just closing comment is, you know, I'm, I'm for this to get done, but I'm for it to be done the way that it was originally bargained for, because the neighbors and the owners lost the opportunity for public comment when he raised and elevated it. You know, I understand it was within code, but, you know, that's, that's end-running the system. And I still have a problem with that today. And so, you know, I hope you consider my, my comments and accept them, and do the right thing here, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, at this point, we'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the commission. I, I would be interested in, from staff, just... I've been on the commission for seven, I don't remember this one, but I could have been gone. It was, so I must have been gone that, when, when this one came through, so...
No, it never, it didn't come before you. It was a little two-story pink house that was in the creek setback, and it partially crossed the property line onto a property that they didn't own. And so, staff agreed to allow them to move it out of the creek setback and off the neighboring property. In the process, it did get increased in height four feet, and, and became gutted, so we got to a 50% remodel point. That is, surprisingly, it happens more often than you'd think with these older cottages that are in bad shape. So yes, there's a history of, of, you know, not necessarily following the letter of the code. However, the house that's being proposed does comply with the code, in fact, it exceeds the side yard setbacks that are required. If the house was torn down, someone would have the right to come in and apply to put a house five feet from the property line. It's nine feet, so I understand there's a history, and the neighbors have been antagonized, and there's bad feelings, but we don't, we, we aren't allowed to review a project based on whether it's being done by a speculator, whether it's gonna be flipped. We can only review it based on the laws and the regulations that are in place.
Right, and, and as those are described, essentially, the entitlement is what's allowable within the, within the setbacks. And so the two, two variances, other than the use permit, which, again, in the town of Fairfax, you're, it's hard to find a property that doesn't require a use permit, because very few properties meet...
And this property is a lot larger than is required, it just happens to be a, you know, a frying pan-type shape, so that the narrow part is at the street, where you're supposed to have a minimum of 60 feet of width. It exceeds the minimum lot size for a single-family home by 4,000 square feet.
And I just wanted to confirm that this hadn't come to the planning commission, it was design review, so even in that situation, it wasn't talking about heights or anything like that, it was talking about how it looked. So, this really is the first application.
Can I ask, oh, I'm sorry, no.
Well, kind of in that vein, wasn't, there, there was a design review for a new residence.
Right.
Was it a previous owner?
It was a previous owner.
And so there was a lot of creek bank restoration done on, within that time also.
Right, and then they, then they discovered...
And that's when...
They discovered that the creek restoration was being required on someone else's property. And so their house was approved, subject to them trying to make an effort to contact the property owner, and it's the weirdest piece of property, it's the creek, and it's listed as being owned by the family who originally owned the restaurant.
Right.
There's a tax bill going somewhere in the city, but the county's tried to contact this family, we've tried to contact this fam... It's, I, it's beyond me why there's no way to contact someone that owns it. But I believe that the past owners tried and were unsuccessful. We told them that they, all they had to do was come back to the commission, and you could lift that condition if they showed that they tried. They chose instead to sell the property.
And just one point on the, when we issued the administrative direction to pull it out of the creek and off the other side property, there was mission creep, and part of the way we dealt with that mission creep was to stop it, and come back in, and go through the formal process after it became a 50% remodel. So we're not punitive in terms of now taking away a person's right. Our protocol is to bring people into compliance, and that's what in fact happened when that went beyond what was allowed.
My, my question goes to, and I, I heard that loud and clear, I, I go by this area a lot myself, it's a very derelict property, and since it's been a house that's kinda half-built and half-left, and for years, can we require a completion bond condition?
We've not done that, and I guess off the top of my head, the recommendation would be to give them this one-year threshold after obtaining a building permit, after, you know, working drawings are submitted and approved, and they get their building permit, put the one-year tag on it, and we'll look into that issue independent of this, if you want us to take that under consideration, but I can't address it right now.
Yeah, I, I would wanna look into that, I, I would request that, thank you.
On the list.
Okay. I know it's late, and we're gonna push through. I think, from my perspective, I, I think there's definitely improvement, I think it's a conflicted, it's, please get it done, is what I'm hearing. Not happy how it's getting done, or how it's been done, but having it done will be better than the current situation. I do think there's certainly room for us to add, you know, a little more condition related to the landscaping, just to address the concerns that have been raised, I think those are completely valid, and certainly something that can be addressed. You know, I agree as far as the, whether it's... The folks, neighbors, want it or not, this is in the envelope that, and, and within the constraints that are established by the town codes for what's allowable. And whether it's this applicant or any other applicant, they, they, any other applicant could bring this forward as well. I, I think it would be important to put a pretty tight condition on, on, whether we call it completion, a tight condition on proceeding with and completing. And I would make it less than a year, 'cause I, I, I think this is a unique situation, that has become an aggravation. And that's the only way that I can see that we could help move it along. You know, whether it's gonna get flipped or not, you know, if we're being very clear about timelines, I think that, that puts it, puts an emphasis behind it, I don't know if that's something we could be doing.
So is it possible to put a timeline on receipt of the construction documents for building permit, and then another timeline on completion?
You're reading my mind. I would say that as long as the timeline for the construction document, approval of construction, construction documents for building permit, language would be to the extent that, all due diligence to come in with working drawings to receive the building permit. Having said that, it goes through a review, and if there's some inadequacies, then those have to be addressed. So it can be a sequential process to get that building permit, but I think you could craft the language, and I do, to answer your question, I think you could do one timeline for the building permit, and one time for the construction after receipt of the building permit.
All right, and then the other concern I've had, and I, I, again, this goes back to one of those things on our list, is when we require park, covered parking, then you get a single-car garage, but three spaces are required, so then you have this really nice face, and then you're just gonna get cars parked up in front. And, and this, of course, the way this property is set up with this panhandle like you described it, there's nowhere else to put them, so... You know, but I, I actually am interested in, in a condition similar to the one we raised on Spruce, which would say that the primary, you know, that the, the spaces would be used for primary part, or for primary-use vehicles, and that, you know, you wouldn't be able to, anything wouldn't be able to just sit there for weeks.
No long-term, long-term storage.
Yeah, no long-term storage in any of the permitted parking, as identified in the drawing, as well as on the public, in the public right-of-way. And I think that way at least, yeah, maybe you want it, you want therapy or whatever, it's gonna be in the property, it's not gonna be out on the street, because I really think that can help us with some of these issues. And again, this is another street with a lot of constraints and parking limitations, so I'd be interested in that as well. Any other comments?
No, more, more just a formality, actually, on the recommended conditions, and how that's laid out when we get there. Usually, for example, number six, you have prior to issuance of a building permit, and then we have points A, B, C, and so forth. And number eight, we have prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the following should be completed, and then we actually have numbered conditions. And that's usually goes against how we do it.
Thank you, I will fix that, so boo-boo.
So I guess the question is, what is a reasonable time period from approval tonight to get the building plan submitted? What, what would be the timeline for that?
You might ask the architect, but I would say, and, and I yield to Linda's knowledge, I would say three months for getting the construction drawings through approval process.
Was it for submittal or for...
Actually, three, three months to submittal, three months to submittal.
It's three months to submittal, and then it goes to plan check, and it comes back, and you have comments, and you have to resubmit, that's part of, kind of a secondary timeline.
At that point, we've got something we're working with.
For submit.
Yeah, and then one month, sorry, one year from receipt, issuance of building permit.
Completion after one, within one?
Yeah, yeah.
Then we'll schedule it for a revisit in front of the planning commission if they fail to keep to those time limits.
It also helps us, because if you recall, this was actually taken up to the town council under a nuisance abatement. So if something doesn't happen, and they're out of compliance with the conditions, they are basically forfeiting the use permit, as it were, and we're back to nuisance abatement.
I, I guess I'm asking, because it's gone to the nuisance, one year is what our standard condition is. So to me, I would push to have it, that completion would be sooner than one year from issuance of building permits.
I'm, I'm not sure where people are getting that one year, because our, our standard for nuisance abatement is we usually give people like increments, depending upon how large of a nuisance it is. You know, 30, 90 days, six months, but I, I don't, I can't recall one where we've given them a year to evade a nuisance.
I thought it was a year for proceeding with the construction, and what I'm trying to say is, if that's what our normal is, you have a year.
Oh, you're thinking...
Why wouldn't, why would we say, you need to complete your construction in a year? Why wouldn't we be saying, you need to complete the construction?
Are you, are you thinking of the HRD that's only good for a year, it's only, the permit's only good for a year?
And that might be what it is, it's only good for a year, it expires after a year.
Yeah, use permits don't have any kind of built-in expiration date, variances due...
That looks like another thing we should put on our list.
Yeah, and hill area, it's, it's odd, I think they just...
It was allowed in 1983, you never did anything, and now you have to do it.
I think they just forgot to add it to the use permit, because they have it for variances, variances expire within a year, if you don't activate your permit, and, and there's language that says, if you don't activate your permit and work...
Right.
Towards completion, yeah.
Right, and, and this, in this case, it's, it's complete, and I think that, you know, we've had other situations where we've had those construction projects go on for years. So from your perspective, you'd feel comfortable with requiring completion within a year of issuance of building permits?
Yeah, mhm, yes.
I think that's fair.
Okay. And I know there's a winter that we should have this year, maybe, we'll, we'll plan on it. Yep, okay. And then I, I'm looking for, I know we've talked about having the standard language for construction vehicles and, and all of that. I'm not seeing it under item seven, although it's probably in here.
Well, what we, what we did for, for the one you first brought it up, is we put it under number six, where that they're supposed to provide to the Public Works Director, a parking plan to minimize the impacts of contractor, employee vehicles, and construction equipment on neighborhood parking.
Excellent, so is, so is something like that required when, say, a contractor comes in and does work for the town, or for a water company, or for a sewer company?
No, it's only, we only get the opportunity to add that condition if they come for discretionary permits.
Okay, 'cause yeah, having lived near that neighborhood and driven through it, that's certainly not abided by...
We have a building section of our code where they could put something like that in, so that it's required, you know, for any issuance of any permit, it's just not in there right now.
All right. Any other comments?
So I, I would like to see a, a condition for additional plantings. The first being, increasing the size of the hedge plants when they go in the ground. A five-gallon plant is not a big plant at all, and it's gonna be years before that's screening anything, so I would like to recommend that that be a 15-gallon plant. And then the addition of a properly-placed, larger-sized tree, 24-inch box tree, between the proposed garage and the stairwell balcony of the neighbor's house, so that, I mean, it's, it simply can be achieved by one tree, it's, it's a good thing. I'm not gonna prescribe what tree it is, but almost anything will do. So those are the two landscape items I'd like to add to that, and then I have, I have this...
So those would be, like, that would be a new condition 16, it looks like? Or do you think it would squeeze into an existing condition?
I would see it as a new condition, because we don't have a condition that...
Yep, so I'll have a condition 16, related to the plantings.
Did you say 15-gallon?
15-gallon on the hedge plants, and 24-inch box on the tree.
Thank you.
And the justification for that is to meet the screening in a timely manner, the bigger plantings are needed.
And you didn't, you didn't wanna make the apple tree part of the condition?
I do, but it's a lot to work around, it's, I can live without it if, if the screening is taken care of for the neighbors, considering, and I don't think it's too harsh to say, the scourge that has gone on here for so long. I mean, really, it's embarrassing to the neighborhood, and these neighbors need some mitigation on this site. So I'm, I'm almost hoping he does flip it, so that we get somebody who's responsible for this property. So I'm okay with the apple tree going.
Is the applicant in the room?
All right, and then we've discussed the conditions related to timeline, and I think that is a new condition as well. We might, order-wise, you want us to squeeze it in a little bit?
I think we'll make that condition one.
Okay.
Did you hear me? I think we'll make that condition one, and, and move everything down, just so it's right up front.
Keeps it simple, that the timeline would be condition one.
Three months for submittal of the construction drawings, and then completion within a year.
Of issuance of the building...
Of issuance of the building permit, okay.
And then the other item that... I'd like to add as a condition is, and forgive me, Commissioner Lamont, but the, the one that you had, the one you wrote down for... Lamont, but the, the one that you had, the one you wrote down for, for Spruce?
That the parking will be for the primary, primary vehicle of the resident and not used for long-term vehicle storage?
And I would say, and long-term vehicle storage will not be used within the parking as shown on, the onsite parking as shown in the plans or in the public right-of-way. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And then a proposed condition, I suppose it could be number 16, that could say, barrier plantings shall be 15-gallon hedge plants, I would say, rather than the five-gallon proposed, and 24-gallon tree plantings for screening purposes.
I think it was that the fif, that the five-gallon plantings, as shown on drawing L1, would be replaced with 15-gallon, and that there would be an additional 24-inch box.
Between the entrance to the neighbor's house and the garage.
Box tree, yeah.
Right. Got it.
Refer back to the landscape. Okay. Any other items? All right, is there anyone that's willing to entertain a motion? We've definitely had our public hearing, we've had our closing, closed the public comment period, we've deliberated, and we've, I think we've tried to be really clear about the additional conditions that we're adding to these. If it's a code issue, I think it's something to bring up with, with staff. It doesn't sound like it's a code issue tied to this application, it's probably tied to the property. You're really advertising it, but we, we've gone through, we've, I think we've talked through this, and I know there's somebody else here, but we had our public comment period. And I do appreciate that, that you've stayed and listened, but I think we're trying to be deliberative and move through this process.
Hi, I'm Shirley Carson.
Were you here?
I'm the property at 21 Manor. I'm sorry, I just have had trouble hearing what, what you've been saying back here.
Okay, can I ask, were you here when we had the public hearing?
I couldn't hear half of it, most of it, and all my, all my question is, what have we concluded here tonight?
That we will, we will repeat it. When we make a motion, we'll repeat our recommendations.
We're having trouble here.
And we could turn the fans off now, I think that might be, I know that's part of the issue, is the fans running. Tough acoustics. All right, so the conditions that we've discussed, adding to the staff report as it was presented in the public packet, is that we would, we would, essentially, condition one would be right up front under recommended conditions. It would be a new condition that says that the applicant shall submit the construction drawings for town review and approval within three months of this approval, and that upon issuance of building permits from the town of Fairfax, that the applicant shall complete the construction within one year. So, it's a one-year period between, we, it may take time to review, but it's a one-year construction period from time of issuance of the building permit. We've discussed adding two additional conditions, that would be condition 16, that a planting, that the planting plan, as shown in figure L1, all five-gallon hedge plants shall be 15-gallon hedge plants, and the justification for that is that it will grow, meet the screening objectives quicker, and that the applicant would, would install or plant a, no, no less than a 24-inch box tree between the garage and the stairwell balcony at 17 Manor to provide screening. And then, an additional condition would be that the three parking spaces, as shown on the plans, the principal, would be used for principal vehicles, not for storage of vehicles, and that there would be no storage of vehicles within the town right-of-way. So, that's keeping trailers, RVs, et cetera, off the town right-of-way, and if the applicant would want that, it wouldn't be in the three parking spaces as shown on the plan. So, those were the conditions that were identified.
Let's just, can we modify it slightly and say, shall be used for, the parking spaces shall be used for?
Shall is always good. All right. So, that's, that, those are the conditions that have been discussed. There has yet to be a motion, but that's, that's kind of where we are as a group here. So, if anybody's willing to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 14-16, 19 Manor Road, as amended with conditions, new conditions one, 16, and 17.
I second the motion.
And I'll just check with staff, you've got enough for, to get those conditions. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So, the application, as amended, passes. There's a 10-day appeal period, $500 fee to appeal to the town, and check with the town before proceeding further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, we will, it's now 10 o'clock, we have the minutes and some discussion items. I think we've already moved through it, so we, we'll just keep plowing through. If you guys are good. All right. Any, any comments on the minutes? Or is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, April 24th, without any revisions.
Is there a second? So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the, the minutes are passed. We're now moving into our, as he's running around, our planning director's report.
It's going to be really short.
All right.
First of all, we added some things, oh, no, that's a discussion item, wait a minute. So, you're all aware, and just for the record, you should meet, retain the repeal of ordinance 778, which you passed on January 30th. If you have any questions to staff, please call me ahead of that hearing. It'll be a normal packet with all the various types of information and recommendations. So, please, again, give me your calls and ask me any questions in advance of the meeting. It's just going to be the one item on the docket for that night, and we have a confirmation of six out of seven of you for that night. Fortunately, Mr. Green won't be able to be here, but we'll miss you, and stay tuned.
So, can I ask just a question about it? It's, it's considering the repeal, so it's discussion about issues, I guess, how do you consider a repeal? I'm having trouble wrapping my brain around that idea, as opposed to, it's been repealed.
No, it has not.
It's not been repealed, that we've been asked to consider whether to repeal it.
So, let me, let me explain. If you recall, there was a petition, and if that, the petition is in limbo right now, it was not certified by the clerk. It's gone to the court for a writ, a mandate, which could either be, it continues to be not a legitimate petition, or the judge could direct the clerk to certify it. Leaving that aside for a moment, although, actually, if, if that petition had been certified by the clerk, then the council technically has two options. It can either vote to put it on the ballot, or it can immediately repeal the ordinance when it's faced with the petition. Take the petition out of the equation, then per the town code, there's only three ways to move on amending an ordinance. It starts at the council, and it has to be directed back to you for recommendation. That's the first way, one way. The second way is if you decide you want to make an ordinance change recommendation, then you deliberate it, have a public hearing, and then move your recommendation up to council. And then, third way is if a resident wants to amend the ordinance, then they make out the application, it comes to you, and then you make your reference, your recommendations up to council. So, this is a unique situation. I thank you for asking that question, because it sparked another thing I wanted to mention. It would help you, I think, if you watched the, the April town council meeting on this item, and also the, the last meeting just two weeks ago. Those, or we, I guess it was just, yes, two weeks ago. I think that would help you as a primer for the discussions, and again, any questions ahead of time will be welcome. There'll be six out of seven of you, and again, we'll be furnishing you as much of our staff recommendations as we usually do, and, and we will vet any questions you have ahead of time, and come prepared if we don't get them answered right away.
And just, just so I'm clear, this, the way it's going, it, it basically opens the door for additional input, comments, changes. It's, that's what we're, that's the, the way that this is being passed back, or it's being passed back to consider whether or not to repeal as it's written? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
They voted, they voted to send it back to you for consideration of repealing ordinance 778.
Okay.
Which you do.
Okay.
Is another story.
But that's, that's sort of the starting point for it.
And, and the reason I'm encouraging you to watch the tape of both the second reading in April. When things changed, if we, if you will, and also, week before last, if I have that correct, the regular council meeting for May, is that at the end of the meeting two weeks ago, or in May, the council meeting, there was some, I think, difficulty, because while they were, the council moved towards, voted 35, 32, to repeal the ordinance and send it back to you in the effort to do that, there was a little back and forth about, gosh, you know, we really want to support the Christ Lutheran Church senior project, so there's some way for the planning commission to, you know, recommend repealing 778, but also to be partial to how we like this project, that would be good to consider. It's a, it's a, kind of a contradiction in, in effort.
I already planned to watch it, because my son is at the first part of that tape, so I got to watch both parts now.
So, but, but again, I hesitate to get into the woods right now on it. I really would encourage you to watch those two pieces. The good news is you don't have to stay up till 1:30 at night to watch what happened earlier this month, when one of the more important decisions of town was made.
It is on the website.
Yes, yes.
We haven't found it already, so it's up.
Thank heavens we have this great service, it's really valuable. And that's it.
I might say that at that, two weeks ago, hearing, there was a huge line of people who were really concerned about the Lutheran Church project, and in general, about the PDD district being eliminated by a repeal. There's also in there, pay close attention to a discussion with the town council, the attorney, about the process itself, because she had it just right, because I've looked up the laws, and she has it just right, and it's, we'll clarify the process for you.
Stay tuned.
Okay, so that is your report? And you're going to be here in two weeks to guide us through? All right. Do we have any discussion items? I know we have the zoning ordinance list, which I think from tonight's discussions, we added either what constitutes a vehicle or parking, we talked about. I know we were supposed to write down another one. Use permit.
Use permit expiration.
Setback, setbacks is also, the problem being that most properties in Fairfax need to come to a planning commission hearing because of a setback ordinance.
Yeah.
And then fence height was another one.
Fence height, that was the one, fence, fence height. Fence height review. We could talk about fence height review, fence height aesthetic review.
And I guess I'd like to add looking at cumulative effects of changes, what I'd like to find.
Okay. So, this was a good full agenda today? We, this was a good full agenda today, we got through it. Okay. Unless anybody has any other items or discussion they'd like to have? Someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thanks much.